...for the parents and the kids. Paul Seag, the board of commissioners for God, all our local pastors, the leaders in church, and we're so grateful for their willingness to do that and their service. And tonight, please to say it's Pastor David Seba, and the first assembly of God church will lead us in prayer. Pastor?
Let's bow together. Before we know that we've come here tonight to do business, we thank you for this county. We're blessed to be here, as we come together to serve and to lead. We pray for wisdom and guidance. We know that your word teaches us that we all need wisdom and that you are the source of that wisdom. We pray that you will give us the ability to make decisions that prosper our community and bless our families, but most of all, that what we do and what we say will honor you. And we thank you for all these things, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I have a nation truly alive, of the United States of America, and through the resolve of holy commandments, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Well, I welcome all of you here in the evening. I know a lot of you are going on a trip, so we want everybody to have the opportunity if you want to say something, that you have that here. So, um, if something comes up that you would like to think about, if you'll raise your hand, then I'll recognize you, and then you can come to the podium, and you have three minutes to speak. Number three, approval of the agenda. We have a couple of changes. We've been asked to do with item number seven from the consent items, and we're going to add fourteen A, which is the board should still approve of breast deglution of the careful implementation of harsh discipline and add as much as public hearing. Are there any other changes, provisions, solutions, or anything else to the agenda?
None here.
There is none. Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
No.
Now, if we know the motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Page, all in favor of say aye?
Aye, aye.
All in favor of aye, aye. Motion approved. Consent item more through nine, the beer take off, number seven. Are there any questions about the consent item?
I'm a little bit confused if you said out, what is that, number seven, did you read?
Is there a second?
Aye, aye.
Now, you got a motion by Commissioner Page, second by Commissioner Hill, all in favor of say aye?
Aye, aye.
All in favor of aye, aye, aye. Motion carried. Public request, number ten, Don Edwards, Jr., who appear to discuss the starting date of the fall season for twenty nineteen.
Uh, yes. Yes, I appreciate it. That's what I received from Paul Kaufman, my name is David Kaufman. The Department of Propose to the Commission on February the twentieth in Lake City, that they flew the start of the fall season in effect this July of twenty twenty, July of first, considering within the school of June, which I think is down the second Saturday, which is pretty often very detrimental to our industry, industries, rain, motel, press on. Um, I'm not sure, they have, there are these conversations, they don't presume any evidence that I know of, that just I know of, that's consistent across the area. Um, there's a number of people here up there on some of those streets, probably even in front of you, saw it, and also anyway, but, um...
Twenty twenty, you said?
Yeah, not this summer.
Not this summer?
Not this summer, but the next. And so, um, in the past, he always supported that movement back, you know, the past year for that, um, season was pretty terrible idealized here because of the rainy waters. You know, we had a lot of rain, and I'll do the same, and I was, I was, I was pushing the cops offshore, and you didn't get them anyway. So, if that had been effective this past year, we'd have had a, obviously, ten days season, and then of course, my concern, big concern, safety, you put that many votes on the resources at one time, trying to get enough in the house, and the vote round, and, uh, sure, we faced me, and, you know, if there was a voter store, or nobody rushing to get in one time, I lived down there for four years, so I, I know what happened. And, and it's, uh, I think the resources won't hurt, um, it's, you know, the, the option is basically anywhere where you can get all the fresh water, not because of the lack of salt. You know, people without a tanker could wipe their whole breath on this, and that would even up to still high. But, that being said, what we want is to try to let people think that matter, and hopefully it's all supported, some type of resolution, to get the package to the commission meeting, uh, February twentieth, in favor of keeping this fall, fall season, season in the winter 季节. And, uh, another reason it's supported is that, um, years ago, when it just reminded us, when it started the fall season July first, to what, to best of my knowledge, yeah, there was no, around originally, until July first, of the fact that it was thing to kick off, you know, July fourth weekend, or something like that, or early. There was a science behind that. Um, we saw this year, just getting impact, complement back from the resource whatsoever, um, and, you know, kids today get out of school a little bit earlier, compared to what we got before, and then the teacher go back early in the fall, so your, so your summer season window for commerce and tourism, they basically move back, I think actually the teachers went back on that, either August third or August fourth. The kids were, you know, just, you know, four, five days behind in, but, so we already have a narrow window there for that season. And we don't have milk season, you know, or we don't have those seasons in some of these other areas around the town. And one of the reasons they gave me for trying to have it all the time, would be consistent through all areas, well, you know, that's really good, but, you know, and, you know, we're not trying to regulate our specific seasons, all, all the fall season, so it's just, it's vital that we keep it that day, but, but...
Thank you.
Ma'am? Scott McCarver. Um, Charlie, well, we see you having a rain, and, of course, nice to see all of you today. Thank you for having us, and, uh, thank you for allowing me to speak. Um, I do, in speaking for your support, possibly in a resolution to support the twenty twenty season, uh, that's consistent with the twenty nineteen season, which opens on June fifteenth, closes on September tenth. We had, um, last year, we had several workshops in place at W C. They actually came to us, and we had workshop holding down the coast, and they asked us what we want. And we, in our little area, we asked that the, um, season open early and close to be early, open to be early and close to be early. And, um, after many meetings, after much information from the scientists, there was no evidence that they could show that wouldn't allow us to open earlier and close earlier. But, if data ever came about that supported that we should not open scout season early, then they would adjust the season at that time. And last year was a, we've been going year to year now, this will be the fifth year, we've been going year to year for the season. Um, we were July first back in two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, and then it went to June twenty seventh and June twenty eighth, and then, um, the governor opened it a couple actually weeks. So, we have, we've been going year to year based on our season, and it, in those years, the data shows that our scout count has been strong, year to year. And it was those data to support to, to not allow us to open early. So, what's happening now is that there's been some calls in F W C from other areas besides Taylor County that elected to open late, July first, July tenth, July, um, and even in August, and then, but stay open later till September twenty fourth. Well, that, I don't think, our area's been very productive in June, in the first week in July. We've had terrible rain to begin July. We all remember rain, we had July, July, and June, August. So, after talking with Melissa at F W C, who is part of the Smorgasbord Regional Office, there's not any data that is calling for it. It's merely a, something to standardize it for the commission, and to get all the counties open at a certain time and close at a certain time. She does agree that scene has to be way more unique, Taylor County, Waymore, unique, Eaton Beach, and even all of these, but scene is way more unique than St. Joe's Bay, Crystal River, and she says it does kind of support possibly a different season. So, what we're asking is, is we all to support the season as it is now, unless data supports existence closing time. And we'd like to take that recommendation, the resolution to the February twentieth meeting, where they're wanting to discuss it in game, so, our twenty twenty rule. The, um, now, Melissa, I also talked last year, talked today, that last year, we were supposed to be getting this adopted into ruling as a permanent season this year. That's what we're hoping. Any questions? Thank you.
Yeah, anyone? Given the fifteen, between you all, what do you want?
That's when we opened last year, that's when it opened this year, and that's when we'd like it open next year.
And you want to finish closing, or is that ten?
Yes.
I'm less than six, six, seven.
Absolutely right. The scout is more important to us for tag than it is to harvest one year in, in profit something. And it's a, it's a county-wide industry.
And, uh...
And some of our, many of our families, government, they're quite smart. But we, we, we are way in favor of the community of this, which is, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you want to pick someone?
Yes. Uh, Chairman, thank you. I'm here now, please. I can't beat it more than what, what we just did.
You can run for it, Mr. Speaker, and then...
Okay. My name is Howard Hart, King of Texas, Harvard, Maryland, the block, and it's a tremendous impact on all of us, just, just to stay the way it is. I see it from, from business standpoint, from the Harvard Corps, of seeing a lot of people, families, coming and spending a lot of time together, with family, you know. It's a very good family time, and it's not interfering with anything, and I call them on conflict, or, you know, and it was due year after year. And I, I recommend it, with the continuous way it is. It's a good thing for everyone. There's only thing negative, man. It's good, I encourage you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, would you want...
That's okay, maybe it's a pretty good point, I want to hear it.
Thank you. Anyone else which could speak to this topic? Yes.
Okay, my name is Lisa Ralfo, I'm in Marin extension, making Florida county. Um, and I'm here today to share some information that I think is important for the board and for, uh, for, um, St. Hatcher residents who are concerned about this topic. Uh, every year before the, or at least the three years that I've been here, before the season starts, we have, uh, a scout season kickoff meeting in St. Hatcher. For that meeting, we invite F W C, especially in scout population, Dr. Steve Geiger, uh, who presents all the information regarding the scout count, that they do pre-use to the season to try to understand how is the population doing, uh, and this information may be used to manage the issues. So, in the first page that I, uh, I shared with you, uh, I have these six slides, all these slides are, um, it, it's not on hurry, it's not showing this in the PowerPoint, um, but, uh, all these six, uh, charts just show information presented by Dr. Geiger about the scout population. First, they, they, he stated that the last three years, what they did is they increased the number of sampling sites, means the number of places where they go and collect on a study, like the past, the larvae and the pets, I mean, the juvenile, uh, scouts and the large scouts, the adult scouts that are on the ground, and they count each one of them. Okay, uh, also, they collect larvae data, the second, um, second chart shows, shows the pet per day for each month. And what we see here is that in December, which is late fall, we have a very large peak of spawning, but, uh, in the rest of the month, we see still some spawning. This means that the scout is spawning during the most of the year, so the population can replenish multiple times. Uh, the, the peak is in December, and the, um, and the season starts in June, that means, uh, gives us a six-month window where the larvae can well tell, uh, in the, in the grass. Uh, and then we have another chart, what shows us the count for these, uh, compared to this pool mall, it's difficult to see, but the chart under, uh, uh, shows the number of, the numbers of scouts per site. And the last two, just show, this one, show the percentage of stations per scout in two thousand eighteen is reduced. It means that they saw less scouts in less sites, but, at the end, they saw that the percentage of the station with dense patches increased. That means that, uh, in the sites where they found scouts, there were several of them. They were very abundant when they found scouts. They didn't find it everywhere, but where they found it, they were very, very dense, very, very abundant. And that's a very physical, uh, behavior of natural resources, when, in this case, the water quality is really affect the life cycle of the, uh, of the scout. Uh, in two thousand seventeen, uh, as I wasn't too aware of how the scout season was in the county, uh, we had a scout season monitoring program, where we collect data in St. Hatcher and Eaton Beach, to let us describe how the activity is managed here in their scout. Uh, and in this report, and this report, which I'm going to share with the, with the county to, it can be found in the county website, so it's, it's probably accurate. And what we found is that at the beginning of the season on the board, there is a, an increasing quantity of people coming to the, um, into, or water to common heart, scout class, but, when the classes start, that gives a peak, and then it starts to decrease really quickly. We collect data during weekday and during weekend. So, before the classes start, in the full day for classes start, we see a lot of people coming in weekday and weekend, but that stops right after the classes start, when the season only, most of the people, uh, only comes during weekend. So, it's a very dynamic, a very different, uh, uh, activity. About the decision for, because why F W C decided to change, I also include in your package one, uh, small letter, this was taken from F W C's website. They said, uh, this is from the agenda, that, uh, the F W C commissioners are going to discuss next February twentieth. They say that from two thousand seventeen to two thousand nineteen seasons were established through a period of excessive order. And that is because they took into account the impact of hurricane areas and other natural events that occur, and for the fact that the coastal communities, that they want to promote the recovery of the communities of St. Hatcher people. Uh, but, uh, as, uh, Mr. Noel said, uh, this morning, I, I sent an email, direct to Melissa Red, she's the, from the Division of Marine Feature Management, that email was also included in your package, uh, where I, where I asked her if how to the board, some commissioners request the F W C commission to hold, uh, scout season public hearing, hearings in Hatcher, because the community was very concerned. Uh, from what I have read in social media, some people is favorable, some people is against, starting earlier, or keep it till July first. Uh, and as I have said before, uh, when it comes to managing natural resources, there is always, uh, a way to do it. Sometimes you have to give up things to make it possible for the resource and for the community. In this case, uh, my suggestion from the, from the beginning was, uh, if we are concerned about the resource, uh, and we want to make sure the resource is going to be harvested in a sustainable way, we need to make sure we have enough scouts to reuse and to spawn every year. And to be able to do that, one of the regulations is a minimum harvesting site, which is not now regulated. Uh, another way to do it, if we, if, for example, we request that we see the fact that a minimum, uh, site for harvesting is, uh, elimination of the, of shocking in the water, so, eh, all the landings of the scout have to be in a whole scout. That way, we can, you know, see the, the real time. And, and, and in turn, for instance, because last year, we hold a workshop with the shocking people in St. Hatcher, and their first comment was, like, we don't understand why F W C does not have a minimum, uh, harvesting site. People come, uh, with buckets full of scout, and they say, we get like at least ten percent of those, their scouts that came out, which makes no sense, because of course, if they're getting the total, they won't, they won't go and, you know, substitute what is the others that have been harvested. So, uh, what these, uh, emails I received or replied from Melissa, she said that unfortunately, they won't be able to hold a meeting before February twentieth, but they're going to try to, uh, discuss with the St. Hatcher community, three or the final public hearing, which they anticipate is going to be made first and second with the F W C commission meeting in Tallahassee. Uh, in the meantime, they invite all the St. Hatcher community to participate in the February twentieth F W C commission meeting, uh, which is going to be held in Gainesville. Uh, anyway, um, I'm here to, uh, support any decision that the board meets. If you would like to have more information about, uh, management, or to contact the right people in F W C, uh, or to work with the community, that's my job. I just, I just think it's very important to people to be aware, I'm glad we're formed to, to make the right decision, if you have any questions.
Please allow me to do this, maybe, to do this, or you can...
Well, based on these, yes, I...
Can y'all hear it?
I'm sorry.
Okay, you guys speak up.
Based on the volume of people here, from the city, I see how vital that the scout season is for this, this is a shame enough, and I'm not in those days. If we don't have scout season here, we don't have heat beach in St. Hatcher, and, um, I can see that in the past fifteen, sixteen years. It is a very, very vital thing, and I think we need to take into consideration everybody's hope, everybody, whether it be negative, positive, whatever it is, it means everybody's hope. I'm looking forward to going to both of them, to Tallahassee, Tallahassee, and Golden Green, Tallahassee, that's what's coming up. Very serious event. I thank everybody for coming out here, because it goes to show how serious, if there was nobody standing here, it'd be a different show. But I thank everybody who's involved with the scout season, whether it be northeast, southwest, and the, kind of, all the people who's seen, it affects everyone. A lot of people are not just coming here to come and come to Walmart, but to keep the, keep the gyms or the gyms. But I think now, I think that by hearing everybody's thoughts and getting their, their points off, and I think they should be considered, absolutely. It's a difficult process when we have new agreements, very difficult process, whether it be water, coal, or any kind of animal matter, this would be considered, and, you got to, you have to record, you can't just go out there and fill up a thousand buckets of scout, like, you've been taking money in scout. So, it's important, in fact, that we bring up stuff like that, it's sustainable. If we're going to fill up our resource, and we can't manage it now, we're not going to have any future, and that community will be gone. So, there's a lot of things that we need to bring to state with, and, again, I need to hear from each and every one of you that are involved, that's a head office, very serious, thank you, and very nice, and sharp, thank you.
Anyone else from the left, left side?
I'd like to ask a question, there's obviously, okay, I don't, you know, I have to, you know, there's always...
There's a couple...
Yeah, let me give you a first, uh, okay, go ahead. Uh, there's obviously, you know, February twenty, to help influence the, the community to talk, to, to engage, and I'm sure F W C will, will listen to whatever, influence the community, what we've heard here tonight. And then, Mr. Murphy's going, I'm sure you're going to be there. But, uh, but anyway, there's another option, we mentioned later on, who, anybody?
Me.
Okay?
Me.
Go ahead. What did the F W C, basically, file this year?
Me.
In fact, so, would there be harm in waiting on a resolution until after the February twentieth meeting start?
Yes, me, yes.
Would there be something wrong with that?
I may speak really briefly. Six years, um, I've been to these meetings several times, and we would, we wouldn't be here before you now, if we didn't think that they were going to adopt the season that's upon us this year for eternity. We're close to being, being the season this year for twenty twenty, every year, but, that's the way it was supposed to be. There, it's not a, it's not a F W C board-wide, um, there, there's a small group that's pushing to get this, um, not our local people. It's not anybody that's against the board here. What it is, 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 this is about principality, this is business. See, we're doing other communities' business, in general. They're making a choice to go to St. Hatcher or go to somewhere else. I don't want to say where, but they want to go somewhere else. And being that political, they're making serious phone calls with very important people, and they're using the words, let's make the season consistent, an open time and a closed time. But our communities are not consistent. We are totally different from Chris W. So, what happens is, is meetings, at the end of February, they're going to decide yes, or they're going to decide no. It's not just, we'll, we'll take them and revise them, and maybe the season, you'll, maybe a recommendation from their, uh, Melissa and all of them, and that, and which is their recommendation. Their recommendation is based on community, what the, what the, what the leaders in the community want, what their recommendation is, and not you. And if we would give them your letters before the bed more even, and say, as long as we're not, like you were actually, as long as we are not, adversity, a second scout, water division, scout, um, we tried men on size women. They got a workshop last year, we were in favor of women, men on size women, a few minutes, build a device, this guy had a great idea, but they didn't want to do that, because the biologist and the scientist says it doesn't matter if it's small or big, it's big. Scouts live a year, maybe sixteen months, exactly on two.
Well, it doesn't make any sense to me, or what I'm wondering about, and I know that this is vital to the economy, and I get that, we all get that. But these other communities that you speak about, they have the same opportunity to go along with the June fifteenth autumn, so that, so the county is not ahead of them in getting all the business. So, there's some reason, I guess, which I don't know, why would... So there's some reason, I guess, which I don't know, why wasn't that, yeah, okay, we're going to go to June fifteenth, there's a big contest, there's a Taylor County. Can you answer that question?
They each were given opportunities, thinking of what season would be best. Many of us here remember going to those meetings. What do y'all want? They went to every community. There's five reasons, you might remember, there's five reasons. And everyone had a different time.
We got to thank it to them, this was part of them, St. Hattie, and St. Hattie, Taylor County are opening up at June fifteenth, and they would say, "Oh, we need to do that too." Something just does a job to me.
Well, I don't know each, I don't know their industry, you know, Franklin, Crystal River, and I don't know their industry. They have manatees, they have other things that we don't have. So I don't know if they have certain seasons, a certain time, or what's best for them. They wanted a open later stay, open long term. They still want the September twenty fourth open, they're a little late. And I can't answer for what's best for their community. It's just, the only thing I can answer is what's best for our community. Personally, I don't want to speak for anybody else in the audience, but if you close it a day after the meeting, it'd be well done, it's just for me. If you reduce the backlog, if you, I'm not speaking for anybody other than me. If you made a gallon per person, five gallons per boat, it'd be fine for me. But I don't like givin' anymore, they already get enough out of our pocket with debt snap and everything else. I hate to give them, but when it's not hurting the scallop count, two gallons per person, ten gallons per boat, they didn't want to reduce the number.
But it takes more scallop to fill up a two gallon bucket at a time.
It does. So that's why we asked, "So why not make the first two weeks, five gallons per boat, one gallon per person?" It's all debt on them. They didn't want to do it.
They didn't want to do it.
The biologist says, the science says that it supports that. So that's what we need to do. So what we're, what I'm asking is, y'all to support the June fifteenth opening and the September tenth closure, that's what it is this year for twenty twenty. And if the science decides otherwise, so be it. But let us pay that for them.
If you got a, if you can draft that.
Come here, we have a long session.
Yes.
How long have we been having since June fifteenth to September tenth?
It's, our last July first opening, September twenty fifth closure was two thousand thirteen. That was the last time. Two thousand fourteen, we opened June twenty eighth, two thousand fifteen to twenty seventh, two thousand sixteen to twenty seventh, and two thousand seventeen, seventeen, eighteen. Two thousand seventeen and eighteen were June sixteenth. Two thousand nineteen is June fifteenth, because that's what they wanted to make it, the season moving cold. That was the FWC commission last year. But since, this will be the third year of...
Two thousand fifty, I mean, June fifty.
And it's been five years that we've had a special opening.
Okay. Well, before that, what was it before five years? How long have you been there?
It's been, I've been there since nineteen ninety eight.
Then the scallops, they're down with you?
Yes.
They're down there now, or will be?
In the last, the last probably five years, we've had more scallops than we've had previous. It hasn't been great, it's like farming.
Yeah.
We have...
I can understand this, this is big, it's big, so...
Yes. But we have, the FWC, the data counts for each count.
Yes.
And our data is just off a chart compared to everybody else. It's all, it's just... But Steve Diack, we talked about, he's all the shooting things. And he's there for two and a half weeks counting. And they take a stake and they stake off the bottom. And then they array a grid on, just count every single scallop in that grid on the same clock every year. And that's what it's the data that shows. But what happens is, that they've done it, but the data that shows that, they have a right to change the seat. And they've always been agreeing to that.
I think they almost started on June the first, part of all these times, yes, sir.
I remember it well. I, because I had to do a quick resolution back in two years ago, and I'll just read you the therefore. Therefore, because all those there can, organic conditions, that they strongly support an increase in the scallop season from the middle of January to September the tenth, each year, past an emergency session this eighth day of February two thousand seventeen. So that's, you know, each year.
Each year.
Now, if I understand what y'all are asking for, just a question for one for two thousand twenty, right?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry. It's like, very, I apologize.
Oh, okay, all right, two thousand twenty, go on.
We'd like, we'd like the board to re-support, reassert their recommendations for each year.
For each year?
Each year.
From the middle of June until the September tenth?
Each year.
Each year. Well, that's what this says, and there's no problem in doing another one just like this, it's changing the day.
We're gonna go to, to the FWC board.
Which is rather, that's what we want. Okay, well, I'm just telling you, there's no problem in doing that and, you know, nope, I did it, so on the computer, all these have changed the day, you know, it's practical now. Then with the addition, with the addition.
And then I was like, then I didn't, I never wanted to say that.
John, what Conrad read there didn't have the part of the judicial, unless it's not changed.
Right, that's...
I think it was understood.
That's right, too.
I wasn't gonna say that, but you got me. I had it written down.
All right.
Just have one of these fifty, I agree with, September fifty thousand, um, signs. Does dictate the life of those, and I do.
Maybe protect all of them. Protect my grandchildren.
Now, you all do understand, I'm speaking to everyone. There's two sides to this conversation. There are those in the beach community, who don't want scallops, who open early, don't know what size they back there, sending it up on, because they can harvest a lot of little scallops. Are there any of those folks here that won't stick against this, before we do anything or not do anything? I don't know, but once you're done, come first. I don't go in the mall, I have this, I'm not bad, maybe get me another boat. I do need two scallops, get the right person to prepare it. But my family loves scallops and they all want to get enough for us to eat. But if one of you know that it is, it's a controversial topic. And that's all we're gonna do.
And that topic was entirely on, for yourself.
Couldn't believe it, they didn't want to ever come. Thank you.
And then you'll be next, okay?
Just briefly, uh, there's a comment there about, can you find scallops?
Yes.
My family's been hour and hour and hour about the first week, and I've never bought any five scallops. And maybe they were there, and maybe I don't know, a lot of people do. But we did find some scallops that were a little smaller than others, and most people found, you know, in front of the back, okay? Did, when I did take our scallops to the shelter that we always use at St. Hattie, and use another one at St. Hattie, I had to actually look at their scallops. You know what I mean? You know, how they're coming in, what they're doing in life, you know what I mean? And they were just a little bit smaller than usual, and a little early this season, but the beat was just about, you know, just big. And they, when the scallop shell got bigger, the meat, that definitely didn't get bigger. But what we found out was maybe, swimming along there, maybe one out of every fifteen was, you know, a quality that's in front of back. But, but, yeah, it's a fact, you know, but most people were doing that on their own, you know, scallops were, you know, to take some recourse. But this scallop's a big, I don't know, I can't see you, I didn't saw one of them. And they have all, it's pretty incredible, so, I mean, that's what our family's experience has been, check out these black ships at the shelter, could be eight of them do that.
Um, I want to ask, you can come forward, that I'm, any point is coming up, I want to ask from Marina, just, is this typically the plan of meetings? Is it customary or do you think that they will discuss the size of the scallop and put some standard size that amended on how small they can be? Or is this something you can plan out, or how does that work?
I don't think they will put that under a recommendation. As me to know what's saying, usually what the commissioners do, they get their recommendations from the fisheries, um, Marine and Fisheries Management Division. So the FWC especially is coming to the board and set up. It's fully because then the constituents can come and bring up new issues to be considered for the draft of the regulations.
Thank you. Your question, my name is...
I live in a scholarship where I live on two oh six tenth of St. Hattie. I'm a marbling class harder there in St. Hattie. Um, my company oversaw a hundred and forty-one scallop trips last season. I ran a scallop trip from the opening day of scallop season to the ending day of scallop season. I had no issue finding those scallops throughout the entire season, never had any issue finding small scallops whatsoever, um, from day one to the end. Um, I actually, I have a timestamp picture of my trip from June seventeenth. But I'd like to show you guys what June seventeenth scallop look like in St. Hattie. And those are much larger than a penny. If that's the size of a penny, you have like six thousand dollars you have. You know, this is not a small thing for us. Um, the issue I think that really agitates me, well, actually was difficult because the rains and things like that made it, the scallops denser, but not scattered everywhere. If I was consulting with a professional in this, that the people that do this every once in a while and say, "Hey, I couldn't find them," are making decisions based on this type of thing. There are people in this room, you know, captains in this room, "We do this for a living, we find these things." And we take these resources very seriously because of these resources, I don't have a business. But I can tell you, there was no issue whatsoever in my years and years of doing this, I've been full-time for about four years now, um, and I've run a hundred plus scallop trips every year of that time. I've never had an issue finding small scallops. They'll be around me, they've never had an issue finding small scallops. I can tell you, I literally limited out a hundred and forty-one times from the opening day of scallop season to the end. And that was scattered evenly throughout that entire season. They were there, they were there to be found, we don't have any issue with resources. Um, they're there. We have, you know, Micker takes this very seriously, I assist Micker in a lot of things he does. Uh, I basically just want to tell you, if the person who was out there, that does it professionally, that was in the water every single day, there's no issue whatsoever. And to speak right along with your question about why there's difference, in my experience, I, I'm very analytical when I do things. I have a lot of friends in Crystal River. The difference is in our area compared to theirs, in my experience, in my, I'm in, you know, my time of being a captain, the freshwater runoff affects our area significantly more. Whereas in Crystal River, it's much more spring than us. So the canic acid and things that affect us, the freshwater that affects us, doesn't affect them the same as they do here. So what happens is, is their season can much be much more prolonged because they're not affected by the things we are. There are some captains like myself, in years past, St. Hattie would close early, we'd let our boats up, we'd go to Crystal River, and we'd finish out the end of our season, we'd ship our pike to Crystal River, whenever it still could run those trips. And it's been, as long as I can remember, Crystal River was capable of running longer than we do. So to calculate our days based on things that work in Crystal River, it doesn't make any sense. Completely different ecosystem, completely different resources, literally different species of scallops compared to theirs here. Uh, we have a completely different setup. So basically, all I'm saying is, is, you know, I understand, I'm the biggest conservationist that you're ever gonna find. You know, I've done everything I can to really understand it and, for my experience, doing this full-time for quite some time now, and being moved underground every day, we don't have an issue.
And so with your part of the data, the decision, that you scallop every day during the season and you're successful all season, so basically for you, then last year, the rain was, the freshwater did not set your business, right?
Well, it, it, what it does is, it makes it more difficult to find them, you know. Um, but for me to call myself a professional, I need to find them on days that make it more difficult. Um, the freshwater didn't affect me any, but I'm not a recreational scalper, you know, my name's on the side of my boat, I, I did that saying, "I'll find them," well, when I got find them, you know, so I'm not necessarily a typical scalper, you know, if I was, then I wouldn't have a profession doing it. Um, so for me, I can tell you, they were there, they're just more difficult to find.
Thank you.
It weren't harder, well, it's not work harder finding, but they were there.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Anyone else would like to speak? Now for Tom. Yes, first, we'll take your name and address for him. And you can speak, go ahead.
I'm Captain Light Farmer, from St. Hattie. And I'm pretty much in agreement with everything that everybody says, with all of that, our economic impact, as long as it doesn't affect our population's scallops. And though we are not pillaging our resources, we've heard, we've heard, and that kind of, we're gonna gotta need to go, we don't do that. We have to make the living on this, year after year after year. You know, all these business people in here today, that's the last thing in the world that we want to do is pillage our resources. We'll be glad to cut down on our length, on our sizes, whatever we have to do. But right now, we're not at that point. Our resources are there, which is just that they found, like, in timestamped, actually, every year. Yes, scallops live fourteen to eighteen months, and they spawn in December. People spawn, is there gonna be some small scallops yet? Everybody has to use their own, you know, personal thoughts about it and not pick up scallops that are too small. Maybe we need a little more training as, you know, people coming into the community to do that. I'd love to see a size, FWC, several people stated to me that they won't do it because they don't have the manpower and the time to come out and, we had talked about counting scallops and getting certain numbers, they don't want to do that, they don't want to do a size ring like we do for crabs and measuring, they do it for lobsters and, you know, they don't want to put with it.
And that's, and that's fine. But we don't want to change what we're doing because science, the people are claiming science, but it's not science. It's a bunch of bull that people are throwing out just to get their weight. Whatever their impact is there, but they want a different season. I don't know those answers, but that's part of the good, it's very common. Same reason that people up around Fort St. Joe's want it, they're short in season, people late in the season, if they have the normal summertime tourism, we don't have that. They're not coming to scallop, they're not coming. So if they can have that, their scallop season late, and they're gonna book their rooms anyway if they were going to beaches or something. We're a whole different animal with what we have. We're very unique.
Thank you so much. Anyone else who would speak?
Um, my name is Danielle Lord, from the St. Hattie Marina. I just want to say, I attended some of these FWC meetings and they're gonna go in there with a proposal. And if none of these people show up at this meeting on February twentieth, they will pass the proposal with this, so I first will have this house. And what, so I, I wanted you guys to support us as our team being Taylor County, and I would love for you to make a motion to secure our commission to open a FWC scallop.
Thank you. Anyone else who would speak? No one? Okay, I think before, there's a decision, uh, if we want to wait and see what happens at the February twenty eighth, or if we want to go ahead and pass this resolution. So I'd like to hear from the board for someone that's ready to make a motion either way, or any comments.
I suggest you send a motion to FWC.
You making that motion?
And this is a community vote. And it's, by the way, I'm seeing all the dead states, I don't hear any news, I have to do what the community wants.
We have a motion in terms of...
I respect.
You have a motion?
It's up, it's not against, I'm against, so. The climate state on the bar, it's a room, huh?
Okay, so right now, we have a motion from Commissioner Murphy with a statement from Commissioner Daniels, any further discussion? If not, all of whom say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank y'all all for being here this evening. Thank y'all all for being here this evening.
I'm glad it, it's gonna be carrying, it'll be in a written, resolution form, that you, uh, care for some time, you get that done, uh, by the way, I won't take no time to get that done. And now, I'm going, I may have said anything, I would say, uh, I, you know, you're nothing got. I need to make this, you know, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you very much. Yeah.
I'm sorry, uh, I'm not, 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 uh, I'm
Do it again, so there's gonna be some changes to it undoubtedly. But the letter is in large, in a large sentence that we want it. Now, what does that mean to you, in my opinion? According to the Attorney General's office, which is about the only body that has written about specific situations and analyzed them, much likely would use it as a case law. There are gonna be a whole lot of lawsuits on this. But the Attorney General's office and a couple that weighed in on it happen to be, one, in retroactive application situations like what you're referring to with the man, and both times, with the first decision made in nineteen eighty-one, is that it's the discretion of the Work Council. Then it's fine, you're not variant, it just is what you're allowed to do. And the second thing that they harp on over and over is solely in your discretion. The downside for you is, is the opportunity where people might say, well, this person got a hundred percent for five years, I got forty percent for five years. What's the difference? But that is in your discretion, you get to do it. So if you feel that this should be the only condition that's coming from out of town located here, um, then presumably your vote should reflect that. And if you feel that it should be for anything for the jobs, whether the difference is already here or not, then your votes should reflect that, it's totally in your discretion. And unfortunately, other than what's in statutes and what you've got in your own code about what, as to what is eligible, there's no real other guy, no other guy. Not really, well, here's an address, you know, we'll talk about that.
Yeah.
He likes the guy on politics.
I agree with, 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 it's in your sole discretion of what exemption you want, whether you grant an exemption or whether you grant a partial exemption. Partial means what?
Let me do yours.
Request for ten years, request this for a hundred percent, okay? All right. In the discretion, the last one y'all did, you did seventy-five percent, recall that when you looked at your packet. Um, and so you don't have to, you do not have to grant ten years. You can't grant a hundred percent. You don't have to grant a hundred percent.
Well, we could grant one year, and then let the other clock in, I could grant another year, right?
Whatever, you have to do a pack though, without pointing. Um, but they, they, and this is a pack though, it's actually only an ordinance, it's not a statute. So we pulled that out of the amended ordinance that I'm bringing you that wasn't a problem anymore, if you want people to do it. I like, with this caveat. I defer Mr. Bishop on that, but I believe we can remove that, of course, in annual applications, it could potentially be a thing. But as your ordinance currently stands, once that's to the caveat.
But then we have to go through this every year, for every one year. So, you know, a good five years.
I just don't think we're hard.
And then in five years, we look back at your industry, and then you report.
And then you report, five years.
And then you're...
Well, it's like this thing works somehow, or it looks like we need a couple of reports, right?
True.
I think it's too late to run a report. You know, there was time that they were doing, and they'd not be done, it's just one of two years from the beginning to have them done. It's kind of like, you know, the, what we see when you can speak to one subject, and how others speak against it, and, and what is the right answer? But, you know, I keep thinking about the budget costs that were ran last year for beer, and if it's gonna happen again this year, could be more severe. And at some point in time, if we don't have enough revenue to run this town, we're gonna have tax hurdles. Now, is it gonna be people that really can't afford to have their taxes increased? And the people that own businesses don't have to pay the taxes? That's my trouble. If, you know, is it gonna be put on the people that can't afford to have to pay the taxes? I, I have a problem with that, you know? I have a problem with that. But then again, we're gonna face this with our jobs.
Our jobs.
Um, it, it's a very, very, very difficult...
I don't envy you at all, I don't.
But I do still think I address a lot of people, 'cause I, I visit every house in my district many times, and I know a lot of people. They can't afford to have a tax increase. So we need all the revenue we can get.
No, in your next applicant on the agenda, um, is claiming that they will add, in addition to sixty-five jobs that currently exist at that plant that didn't after last, that, that their plan is to add a hundred more jobs.
Oh, that makes my point.
Yeah. Two people are living in the district. Yeah, they don't want any tax burden put on them. But if you, if you can both, you people know more about it than I do, as representatives of SuperPUB, um, you know, they may be able to do more specifics about what they're asking for, what they can do, but it, it has to remember them.
And, and, and their location in the country.
Uh, uh, when we talk about this, Mr. Bishop, that this tax deduction starts after the completion of the spending?
Yes, sir.
So it wouldn't affect the tax roll this year unless you can get, let people hire, and get them going in the early.
Right, I think it's a twenty million dollar, um, mechanical purchase, which would then be the machinery and things to open up a new...
Car boom machines, then plus, sir. The inkstone machines, then plus, they would take it out, and not a land, but...
I don't have specifics, I may be better for them, but, uh...
You want to come and introduce that and...
Give me off the hot seat.
And, and see. I would have told you before you made the start, that we are so appreciative of you being here in Tyler County. And you can understand that the wonderful man, we're very appreciative.
We're not passing that first, we're... My name is David Beecher, I'm the Chief Financial Officer, so, uh, we appreciate y'all's consideration. Um, we're not last night, and we can purchase the building and, and some of the assets, and we, we put a lot of money into it, we plan to put quite a bit of month of money into it this year. We're, the big line you're talking about, it's gonna, if everything goes right and we get all our other finances in line, we are gonna have that machine delivered in May, and we'll start operating by September. And it's the big line, it's gonna consume a lot of cash, and we're gonna get a lot of jobs out of it. We've already started working with the Career Source, we're going out to, uh, the community colleges, and that's the proposal last week, to get some training for our technicians, to have a program to get the, so the whole workforce to come in and get them up to speed, 'cause this is not like some old stuff we have, it's pretty high cash, new lending. Yeah, so trying to have it turn all the different things on, and they're working with a design program. So we want to invest in this community, we wanna grow this community. We also have another location we're looking at, and so we need to make a decision pretty soon which way to go. I grew up in South Hackett, so I just shouldn't be here, but we gotta do what's best for the whole company. But again, we wanna make it work here. We intend here to grow the company, we didn't, we didn't, that's why we're here, you know? Look, we also, we, we see the public, we appreciate it. Now, the fact is, all this, this twenty million dollars of equipment, you know, the purchase, we just appreciate it. So each year, the payment would be there.
I mean, I assume that's how the property trader does it, in fact, isn't he? I'm actually, uh, weighing into that, I already gathered the data on nation.
You got the data?
Yes, sir, from the, uh, property trader's office.
What are we talking about?
We are talking about over, uh, the, uh, three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars is the amount of tax due revenue in year one, and in year ten, it's down at a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, and that is because of depreciation. Uh, if that's...
Ten years of a hundred percent would be, um, what, ten, ten dollars?
It would be...
Go ahead, Mr.
So, all right, I got my page, so I'll order here, but I have it in the packet, that, in your packet is the, uh, we're from the GBA, the letter that...
Should have memorized it by that.
Sir?
Should have memorized it by that. Too many, six, seven hours. It's thirteen thousand dollars, I admit it bad, it's a little, I'm a little... Now, we don't have to do a hundred percent, Mr. Bishop, they post. It's only competitive. If the other guy gives you a hundred percent, you know, we don't give you a tip. It's about your last payment, where are you gonna go?
We're gonna make the, the right decision for the company and, and for Tyler County. We, we wanna be here, and then, then we're gonna invest quite a bit of money, and we, but we, we need the work community down, we're gonna help us with the assets, provide workforce, and so, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna make the...
As they hire a hundred, hundred people, are those hundred people gonna need jobs that you're gonna provide? They have to get at least fifteen dollars an hour, pay jobs, insurance, and this. And you can't, uh, raise family on fifteen dollars an hour anymore. Buy a house and get on a tax level. So I'm just, just gotta figure out how, how, how the community, you're gonna bring part of that two million, six hundred thousand dollars back.
You know, we're, we're...
That's been used, so... Well, again, a lot of our starting salaries is probably about, in, in thirteen and fifteen, but some of our higher techs and mechanics may still be more, uh, just twenty-five, thirty dollars an hour. So, I mean, we have a broad range, and a lot of what's coming on with this new line, technical, that's why we went out to community colleges, we need folks who can, uh, return rent, who can understand the, the computer piece of it, so it's like it's automated nowadays. So we need folks that, that are willing to, and we, we're willing to invest in, and pay for their schooling to go to their, to learn how to use the machine. So, yeah, we're, we're gonna help, um, at minimum. Again, I, I would say we're around thirteen dollars starting for the, the walking indoors, it's gonna be, uh, it'll be a lot higher.
What percentage will be in the higher, um, than part of thirteen, uh, eighteen dollar range? Can you tell us?
Well, again, it depends on which, we're, we're gonna be putting a number line there. Uh, that the big lines is gonna be probably a lot more towards the, uh, the upbringing, there's a lot of technical things, learning how to get the different pieces of communication and stuff. But we got, we're gonna have everything from, from folks that are helping us pack the bags, to folks who are maintaining the equipment. The folks maintaining are higher in scale, it's gonna be quite a bunch, just maintaining all that equipment, and the folks offering equipment, again, they're gonna have to come in a, a, a premium above what our typical packer makes, because they're gonna be offering machinery, which, which is, um, uh, much more responsible and higher wage. Uh, I, I could, off the top of my head, tell you what the breathtaking might, might get at, but, yeah, it's gonna be, again, most of our, i- i- the, the growth is often getting started, it's gonna be in the, the mid, the mid range. It's, it's, we're just gonna be, you know, north of that, that same.
There's their application, but, uh, generally, one hundred full-time jobs in the past five years average wage, and that's thirty thousand per year. That's how they report that, their application, whatever that writes down to an hour, or a dollar per hour, I don't think, but, uh, any question?
All right, this one was worthy for us to think, but we just aren't looking at it. I'm not prepared, cannot, now, care, with saying whether I'll do it for ten years, or I'll do it for ten times, ten years. But it's gonna be a great business for the community to have a hundred jobs. Now, we gotta make a decision, something. If you all feel comfortable, I'll make my decision tonight, I'll look and wait for it. Sir, if you want to, you're called, one hundred percent.
What about the rest of the board, when it goes through the process on Thursday, do you want to back from now?
We can, but I tell you what, from one hour to four, I'm letting out, if I don't have the victim here, I'm leaving. You don't have the victim, but I want to hear the time. So I do my calling to do the best I can, and I think you can deal with it, and we can deal with it. But if we wanna be here...
Sorry, I don't have your house, I'll find a place for them.
Okay, I think so. I'd like to help you on that. So if you decide that you want to, I guess, consider this verdict, then, and by saying, essentially, we find that the, the applicant is ineligible for the request, then that status, or, or the county, the way that the property trader, the property trader has to send back the D R, or, I think, for a team, whatever it is, is the prescribed form in the statute, where they will then officially report the main numbers I told you, as far as the amount of tax value, and then you would come back and actually, those are the resolution of the later meeting. So if you want to take this up Thursday evening, you, you making a vote tonight is not going to do anything. You still have, if you wanna follow the process, the people property traders can have to come back. So it's, I'm, I'm moving out, this Thursday is a little shooting. Check.
Yes, I, I...
Especially the workshop Thursday, that's where I am.
That's where I'd like to be. But I think on Thursday, that we have to make decisions on Thursday. I don't want to postpone it beyond Thursday, because this is, since, like Commissioner Mooney said, we keep this going down the road now, and it's time to, uh, make the decisions on Thursday, and we move along. So, uh, I think everybody, uh, for your company, obviously...
We're gonna be fair, but we're gonna do Thursday.
Which we're gonna look after, and we're gonna look after our whole community too. So, you know, thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Constitutional officers, are there governmental units?
I will, in the name of government, this law for the election, to appear to request a notice of consideration on the following day, in connection with the special primary election of Tuesday, April the ninth, twenty nineteen, and the special election of Tuesday, June the eighteenth, twenty nineteen. And we'll start with a notice of special election for the office of state representative, this is Thursday. And, uh, good evening, thank you for letting me come back so soon. I was just here for last meeting, and, um, trying to get you to play up the special election, but it hadn't been ordered yet, and I think two days later I got the order to conduct it. So we have received the order. Um, I did want you to know those dates that you were submitting at the last meeting, that I might want to possibly put something on the ballot, if there was anything kind of hanging in the air, and you still have that, um, ability to do so, I wanted to give you some deadlines on that, I don't know if that means a hack in our life. Um, things are gonna move really quick, and we normally have lunch to, to prepare and get things, we really only have seventy-five days to get the collection, um, done, so, um, if you want to place something on the April, um, ballot of the deadline, um, that I would need to receive that information, would be February the fifteenth. I may not have been on the order.
April the fifteenth.
Okay, but, um, would you add that, could you, if you're given up for Thursday?
Yeah, you know, talk about that. The, um, the qualifying for a candidate will, will, um, end on the fourteenth of February, and we're gonna move pretty quick after that, because we got to get ballots nailed out, forty-five days, or four election dates, so it's gonna move pretty quick. Um, the deadline for the June, um, election would be April the twenty-second. I would really encourage you to try to get it on the, um, April election, if at all possible, just in case, um, because the current stance right now, with qualifying not over, but as it stands right now, it looks like we're, um, gonna have this Republican primaries. And so if something was to happen and that Democratic candidate did not qualify, then it would be a universal primary, and it would be over next year. So you need to kind of keep that in mind, um, if we may not need to get elected today. So don't, don't bank on it going on that one, if something happens and that's not, if my exit didn't come up in that election. So just kind of keep that in mind, it's so full of money, but, yeah. It would. Um, the second thing that I have there, um, the board needs to appoint a member to the canvassing board, and an alternate member to the canvassing board, um...
Are there any volunteers to be on the canvassing board? This one is a fun time.
I, I have very good schedule with, with others, uh, four, she's, uh, been on the crew, so... I would like to, really would like to, but I think it's not...
Well, Commissioner Mooney is not here. Did you say that last? Anybody wanna go?
I think it's, I think it's possible, we can, it's happening for him.
Any volunteers?
I don't, I think, we, we, we all, uh...
You wanna do it?
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll appoint Commissioner Mooney to help you out?
Yeah, all right.
Okay.
I certainly don't think this is gonna be an immediate, unless, like...
It's gonna be a deal, uh...
Do we need to do this in the form of, of, like, so, um, somebody wants to make the motion to...
I'd like to move the, point, move them, to be the canvassing board representative, and, and, and... Move you off.
Is there a second? We have a motion in the second, any more conversations? If not, all in favor, you say aye.
Aye.
All at the same time, motion's true. Okay, I'll keep the calendar, okay, bye. Thank you.
Um, the next item listed is approval of the budget amendment, um, for the cost of the special election. I still am understanding that if we run it, it does mean both elections, it's gonna roughly be about seventy-five thousand dollars. Of course, that would be less if, if the new election doesn't take place, um...
Can we move on to the budget again, um, um, for the April, um, election? And then if it, and if it, and it's extended to the June, then we can, you can come back, and we can cover it in the, um... Somebody wanna make that motion?
I'll make it. I'll say, motion, whatever, well, motion is the way I'll take, half the money, the ha, or the seventy-five, half of the hundred.
No, seventy-five is, is what I anticipated. For just the one, that I have provided, so, so it's seventy-five dollars.
Sure, seventy-five, a hundred, and that money will have to be pushed out of reserves, loan, and, and, uh...
Or capital, or contingent, please?
It has to come out of, if anything, 'cause this is not capital, we don't need capital.
And then you see, just like, maybe, you see. We have a motion in the second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All at the same time, motion's true.
Um, I did wanna say about the cost of the election, um, once the election is over and we, um, submit our budget for reworking from this day, we do have to itemize, we stop, and that we stand up, and the only, the copy of that does have to come back to you board as well, so you will get an eye on it at the end of the election. And of course, if any of those lines, if you voted it isn't, stand on that specific election, it will be...
You're just, uh, just, just, uh, lack of that, of course.
I think it's gonna be lucky to, I mean, I'd like to get more, but realistically, federal elections, you know, seasons like that, you know, like, they do not very much like, unfortunately, no.
I'm gonna do a lot of the, we...
Um, I, we do need to, um, get the whole promise agreement prepared for, um, the polling locations, all of its polling locations will be utilized in this election, just like all other elections, and so, um, we do need to get those, see the polling location, um, sides, if you can ever sign off on it, just with the board, have to be signed, yeah.
I'll move that we, uh, since the execution of the last, you don't want to approve, so the voting question for local location.
Good second.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye. All at the same time, motion's true.
And I think we have the original law, the pocket act, double, um, yeah, maybe you have to be signed, uh, the payer, um, or, um, that has the witness in hand, um, on the side, but, okay.
I have a question again. Are you gonna host the ethics workshop again this year? Um, I, I haven't thought about that at this point now. Um, well, we, um, I'm assuming that, that the, um, legislative, fat legislative, maybe, we have the opportunities to do it, but it, it costs, it costs every morning, so...
I would love to host it again, I would love, I, I feel like I'm gonna do it, if we're gonna do it here, we have got to have more participation. Um, it was a little bit of an embarrassment at the last one, but no more than, yeah.
I'm there, now, I'm assuming that, I'm assuming that, 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 that training I had last year at your place counts for this year.
Um, no, that's not, it is a calendar year, so you were...
So then I'd be, I'm gonna, either you gotta help up for me, or I gotta go to South Hackett alone.
I would give to it, um, I didn't actually coordinate that gentleman coming, but I'll reach back out and see if he, he'd be willing to come in.
Well, I had, I had wanted to be there, and I forget what it was, but I talked to him, and, uh, some, yeah.
So I did know we had a ring for him, we did, and, um, he did an excellent job.
Yeah, very interesting.
Very engaging, like, this is, this is a real, this is a power, so it was, it was, I was, I only told him I'd be, I, I can do that.
I could be appreciative.
Now, we need, uh, I need to do it, Lord, and we need to let facts know that I didn't technically get the train, get there, and that, and hell, all those slaves, anything.
Uh, I'll go one second, I have my...
Well, you may not know if we made a resolution for that, and that can help, a little bit here, still there.
Well, all of us have to do it. So you have multiple opportunities in the year?
If you have to travel, then it's, uh, it costs a lot more, 'cause it's, uh, this was very, uh, great, and, yeah.
I'm just sorry that I couldn't be there.
I'll, I'll see, I'll make a contact and see if, if I can give them the, 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 the date, sooner than later.
Well, we'll make, we'll just take a little...
Thank you.
Okay, county stamp item number thirteen, the want to consider a total of this document advertising in the soul of the old hospital facility, that was given by Kenneth Studdler, county engineer.
We should have the, 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 for that, and what I did is, like, it's just kind of, this is my first, that, that, we couldn't put it together with, um, the primary media, the document, and hospital one, which is the instruction, and that kind of lays out the guideline for what we're trying to tell them, cost of here, cost of there, first, and cost of here, and then, um... Um, the only thing that I left, uh, out of that recommendation was, um, if you, you have to decide two things. One, how long do you like to be advertised in court, and then two, where would you advertise? Because I really don't have a lot, a good handle on, except for where we should be advertising, that in order to kind of maximize the exposure for this type of, um, this venture. I've been looking a little bit online this, this afternoon, and, you know, there is, uh, kind of an abundance of different counties that are out there that advertise on their, internally on their own websites. Um, there's a DSA website that is soliciting, um, interest in federal projects, but I didn't really see anything beyond just the local, town level, so, you know, I... I need to draw on somebody else's, like, excuse me.
I have no idea.
I have no idea, but I'm not a favorite of every time, it's gonna say, dead in Boston, you're a little, a little, a little...
That margin across the line.
That, that, you should more do that, that before my time, and pass, and, and, like, I do one dress.
I think you're right.
Oh, yeah, I got my Christmas.
I'm happy, no, I think we did, we did, we did, we did a lot of that. We did a lot of general advertisements for something, but we're not, we're not...
Yeah, we know the thing is.
All right, well, what we need to do, guys, prove the document, not really prove a lot of, you, you a lot of time on this, let's, let's, right.
Not really, but, I, I did, I...
All right, so we include in the bid a minimum? We talked about that one.
We did, we did talk about that in the re, in the purpose for the minimum is to ensure that we cover our costs for the transaction as well as the potential costs that we anticipate for the mental wing of the association, for the power of the...
We have to do this.
That's right, and I, and I did see, um, various advertisements this afternoon that a minimum is not uncommon. There's quite a few in there that's that way, and I've even seen it ranged all the way to where if someone, the prospective buyer would have to cut a separate check, even pay for advertising expenses. I mean, they literally wanted them to cover everything. We haven't done that, you know, I assumed that the advertising expenses is something that we would just incur, but, you know, if you wanted to establish a minimum, you know, I looked at the just values on the property trader's office today, it's inclusive of the health department, I didn't see it segregated, they didn't have that internally. But, you know, you're talking over a hundred grand just for the land value itself. Hospital property exclusive of the health department, just under two-thirds of the overall carpal. So you're still talking about a eight thousand dollar aim just for the land value.
But you're taking on a re livelihood, you're getting rid of the old bill.
You are, and, um, you know, that's something that we, uh, Juan and I talked about internally after that, that we kind of reached out to the legal aspect of it, and if there was, um, obligation for closure of that asset, this aspect to this property. It's not residential sale, so if it's commercial, there's not an obligation for us to disclose that, but subsequent to me submitting the, um, the documents for the agenda, I did go back, and I added a line item that said that, um, on request, I'll provide information pertaining to previous properties slash building investigations. So I want to at least make them aware that if they have... So, I want to at least make them aware that if they have a curiosity of, are there any things that we should be concerned about before we look into this? And ob- obviously, we're telling them, you need to do the site examination, but we will provide that information, um, at their request. And, not to heighten the thunder, but I went and I added some additional information in the, the, um, top part of the general instructions that I wanted to make sure that you add, um, which is what, say.
Yeah, fifty, oh, five point six five acres, is that included the health department? No.
No, the overall park was, I think, a little over eight acres. This one is just, it is to the east, everything east of Oaxpanada Avenue, do you provide the wing that's through there?
Uh, let me say, the law, you talk about a minimum, too.
Yeah, um, you know, I don't think I would, to make sure that, if I wanted to tell a buyer, look, if you'll just take us off our hands, you know, we're willing to allow that to happen, I would probably do, like, a fifty thousand dollar minimum so that I make sure I have sufficient funding to address the power and any other things, tendencies that aren't, you know, just that kind of, something along those lines. And the ones that I did see, you know, there's times that you, you need to offer a bid that is, uh, the minimum, if it has a stated minimum, anything other than that is considered accountable, and so now, I'm just getting that.
And you don't recommend adding the advertising to that fifty?
If we, if, if the board agrees that a minimum is something that we want to knowingly convey, yes, ma'am, I will put it in the application. So that people don't commit something, thirty thousand dollars, when we already know in our minds we're going to reject it unless it's fifty. I, I would change what I just gave you.
But I think, if you, if you're pretty high, that actually, so.
A little bit.
A little bit of advertising out of that.
It was, um, you know, if you recall, the, the estimate that we got to remove the tower was right in the thirty thousand.
One point three.
And that's why I.
You think, then, now, does it, it better have to show us what their plans are for the film?
That's right.
But I hope this building sits there in its ragged condition and deteriorated for some dollars, just to have it for fifty thousand dollars to do whatever, I personally don't worry about somebody.
Can I speak frankly then?
Uh.
Can I speak frankly?
Yes.
I think you're mixing up the norms here. So, if you're, if you're active to dispose of this property, and you are comfortable with allowing someone to acquire that at that price, what they do with that building is a relative.
Their neighbors live there, so if they don't vote for me now, they vote for Pat.
If you, you have that concern, then you, then you need to clean up stuff.
You know, I, I had some in mind.
I have to speak frankly, of course.
Well, I, 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 I like that. I, I, I'm saying that has been, uh, someone who's stressed in, and he wants to get rid of this shit there, and use it for a painting facility, or law enforcement going to shoot their paintballs again. I don't know if the community aware, that's what they won't force, if that building's standing there forever, and signs grow up on the walls, and talking about security, and vandalism, you know, copper drum and stuff like that.
You know, as long as they do something that is consistent with the zoning for that area, I don't know that we really have a way to stand on the place that they can't use it for that.
Now, what I read.
Y'all go ahead.
What I read, and I, I read pretty much all of the wonderful lines of this whole thing, and it, it, it says, the buyer could demolish buildings and clear carpet, right?
I, I, my money is not.
And I, and that's what I'm, I'm telling you, this was my first step, I literally took a, a construction contract and tried to reshape it into a sale contract. So, where, where did you, did you have a section that you thought it was?
I saw it in a writing down, the only thing is that I know then, because I did not see a time period, so if we do want it, uh, demolished, then, or whatever, it would be a time period that really will be done by a certain.
Any reference to demolition was not intended to be, so I would remove that from it at this point, I, I, that's not my intent to have it.
I have a, I have a, look, I was on my computer saying.
Well, I, also, I can start, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna make sure that I remove that.
If somebody will buy it, in my, I want to get down, I want to re-permit.
I hope so.
Oh, yeah, if you re-permit.
What could we say, if demolish or re-punish, it not sit there on a time period, do it on paper with it?
I'm telling you that I, if there, if the word demolish is in there, it is an accident. It is not my intent to put any obligation on potential buyers to demolish anything. I, once I sell it, as long as it is consistent with the zoning and permissible under the Florida law for this area, it, it's not my business what they do with it.
I understand, I understand. It's, I have a problem with a thing being there, and like Commissioner Page said, um, it continues to deteriorate and what it starts falling in, and you've got nice neighborhoods right across the road on it, and all around, as a matter of fact.
Well, all true, and somebody in the neighborhood could be fluffing it up for having left the air this long.
Yeah, they are, they are.
And that's what we're trying to do, we want to offer this, an opportunity for someone to come in and utilize that property for their intended purpose, whatever that is.
Now, that's what you said, can you have another opinion?
Yeah, ma'am, I believe.
What's going to be here in that, well?
Yes, ma'am, I think if you start putting demolishing in there, you're not going to be able to sell it.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if you're going to be able to sell it anyway.
That's wrong.
True, uh, uh, the other thing is, uh, if it's parked, it's in the city, isn't it?
Uh-huh.
You, what, they can do it, right?
You could.
After sale, they don't do anything with it, help on one thing.
Yeah, I don't know, probably, if they're doing, you said, they do it all the time.
Yeah. It's not the greatest idea in the world, but, well, again, uh, I'm looking for demolish. Looking all over, you know, you and I looked at this together. Early the psychic is in there, I'm telling you.
What is the, what is the same, same, um, please, I think what you might be looking at is on page three, it's fourteen, there is discussion about conducting examinations, investigations, explorations, tests, and studies. And then it does say, get a couple of holes and clean up and restore the site to its former condition upon completion of such exploration.
That's when they're examining it, so when they want to.
Okay, so, I, I, maybe this is something that, that I, I get, I, I thought I heard, but I, I'm not, I'm not.
And then, um, just to, you know, just to be sure, in your package, you should have an aerial, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and understand that the red line is the outline of a property that we are proposing to be included in this perspective. That includes all those buildings and leases within that, that, right there.
Now, we, we have a right to protect any and all of it.
Yes, I made sure that we preserve that right.
Sure, really right, I say that, you're in, get six times on minimum, and, uh, advertise, not spend a lot of money on the advertising, whatever you deem appropriate. And may I give a bit?
We may not, and the reason I, I bring up the red square is, we all know the fall storehouse is down there on that south west corner.
They want, for what?
The father's storehouse, are you utilizing that building on the south west corner, or southeast corner, excuse me?
First minute.
Uh, well, it, it would change, so, anyway, um, we looked at the lease this afternoon, and then, under section eighteen of that lease, you have a provision, it, either party has a provision for terminating that lease with ninety days advance notice. But what I would suggest is, as we move through this, if we are successful and get a prospective buyer, that that be at least addressed, included within the conditions of closings, that we, you know, make sure we provide that nine minutes.
Even after volunteers, it's the only thing to do.
I see her every Sunday, I.
I'm serious, we have to tell this on another place that we sell this seriously, because they do, um, wonderful, so, we can, and I do know I want to have her, so, I'll talk to her about this. So, to put my name to her.
Oh, yeah, I have to see her every Sunday.
Well, we can be looking, I need to be, you must very kind of listen to another person. So, then, I'm hurt, I'm.
We're real, I'm serious about that, because I'm very glad about that, because, um, you know, she's very passionate about that. Now, what kind of cap, if any, are we going to put on the advertising? Because I'm.
I think probably at least thirty days, um, something of this size, hopefully, we may get proposals from a large way away, um, maybe we advertise for sixty days. I will try to do as much free advertisement as possible, um, obviously, electronic media is the one that we've been trying to do the most for. Um, I would say that for a statutory obligation, we would put, you know, consecutive advertisements in our local paper, maybe once a month, for those two months, um, so that, or does it have to be consecutive weeks? No, that's consecutive, or it has to be? But that, the top line in order, okay, but, I didn't remember something, I remember that, I had some folks come in here that were interested locally, um, if it was.
I don't think they.
It looks, it's gone, and, well, if, if they should hear that, if it, oh, you know, a local bidder that did that, then they're not going to leave it there and, uh, deteriorate, because they'll get to fly it then, this whole thing.
Remember the law, dog, doctor, the thing? When we do it, watch those, uh, something out of there, I'm not doing.
Now, whoever wanted it, wanted to give us ten thousand dollars, if you remember.
I remember, I remember, we used, well, we want to play, that's, well, I.
I mean, it was a negotiation tactic, but, you know, it was a low, a low.
But, yeah, I think it could, advertising locally would be a good idea.
Okay, so, sixty days, we'll get, um, consecutive months working in the local paper, and we'll have options under social media and electronic.
He's responsible.
I'm moving through these, uh, the, the.
And the thing that I gave you, I, I will incorporate that.
We have a motion, Commissioner Page, the second, more commission, do you have any further discussion? If not, all in favor to say aye.
Aye, aye.
All opposed, same time, motion two. Thank you, sir. Out of fourteen, want to consider approval of big documents advertising for the leasing of eighty plus acres to be pumped to the pain at Perry Foley Airport as attended by Valley Cop Grant Director. Welcome back.
And I will willingly take on this Peggy, well, that's quite on me, she's long, she's.
She's got on me too, and I'll repeat it that way. I'll take her on for it. Um, back when these big documents were originally on agenda, um, it was rejected to work with it because Commissioner, um, Meeley wanted a clause added where we could add solar farm and, um, cancel the contract. So, I have added that to the documents, it's in three different places throughout the documents, in one contract, that, um, we have the right to cancel the, we cancel the contract after a ninety day notice, but we will let as much as, um, that years cutting. Um, I thought that was only fair that we did that because they invested a lot in the firm, I think, and what they think that years cutting out, um, I, I think that would work very well, I thought there's a couple of people that are interested in it, and they felt like that was fair. I included in there that would be for aviation purposes and for the development of.
The mother's proof, what, document, you just had, uh?
We got a motion, Commissioner Page, second, back to Commissioner, do you have any further discussion? If not, all in favor to say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time, motion two. Commissioner has missed you, I have missed all of you too, and I knew, I, you know, we had a dispute, which, why you included in your capital improvement plan, but, um, because we were such a successful saving area last year for Hurricane Michael. As we, we are going to give it a grant in the amount of hundred, four thousand dollars, we can waste on that, to build a, um, large generator area, that would be the airport's own operational, including the steel, for the, for the. But, really, and what's the math?
Two hundred.
Wow.
All right, ten, hundred forty thousand.
Hundred forty thousand, good point, good, good. But I'm lying to you here in fifty, thank you. Fourteen A, the want to consider approval of draft resolution of intent for implementation of prior settlement and advertising for public hearing, um, as attended by the county administrator, Andy Parkey.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
All right, all right, this is really down to rush, um, and, uh, Juan will probably attest to that, but we, uh, we moved very quickly, um, went to, there was guidance that we, that the board wanted to keep the fire assessment option availability going into the closing here. Um, to do so, we had to meet certain, certain requirements to make sure that happened, um, we had to start advertising for four consecutive weeks prior to a March first deadline, which included having, having special meeting on the twenty eighth, I believe everybody's aware of. Um, we had to go off of old draft resolutions and everything that we had from the first time we tried this in twenty seventeen, um, we went through, made some adjustments for the dates, and a little bit of verbiage. Um, that had started in the newspaper, we were very fortunate, we got it in, in time, so we, we started the advertisement. Um, today, it's more just to answer any questions you have, I believe, and I think you're aware of everything that we had to intend, very good, hurry to make sure we gave it out.
And this is just to, uh, have it so that if we decide that we need to implement this, because of budget, whatever, then, then we can do it at that time, it's not doing it now, and not getting it ready, so we can do it.
Yeah, this, this could be a record, we're going to do a public hearing on the twenty eighth, we, which will be followed by your resolution for the notice of intent, and you have the intent of considering it, more or less, um, that, like, if this does not set a rate, it does not set that you are going to do it, it just, that's totally, we have to have a, a notice of intent, and that goes out to the property praiser, uh, tax collector, and the Florida Department of Revenue, and it lets them all know that we're considering it, so that, you know, this may be coming.
And if we just tried to, to do it in the future, then we would decide at that time exactly how it would be.
Yeah, and it's, it's, we're going to follow basically the same timeline that we had before, um, except for now, we're a little bit ahead of the game a little bit, because last time, at this point, we had to go and go up contract, you know, get the vendors, go through the whole process, fortunately, we've already done that. So, we would only, if the board chose to move forward, we would pick up where we left off on with page two of that, of that contract.
Commissioner, are you familiar with this, or do you, the lack is explained a little bit more?
I know, we're briefly, we'll be discussing a few subjects briefly, so I am caught, being, glad, I expressed this too, Dan, and I'm glad you did, and, well, this, we're, often this has been a example for our other areas, we share, or, 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 and.
That's another problem, there's seventy-eight hundred dollars associated with this, this part of.
Just as before, if we decide to proceed to end the page two, if the board elects to it, then we would have to fund that seventy-eight hundred dollars, and if we, I would have to double kick everything with G S D, because it's been a couple of years, um, if we, we have the option to attach to the term notice, which would save us money, um, if we do not elect that, attach the term notice, or get it set, or set in time, we would have to be first class.
Well, I don't have the seventy-eight hundred dollars, all the twelve thousand.
But if we get to page two, I'm not saying you're, I just, we're still working on it, so, a- at this point, there's no, there's no, it's not, we've already, we've already sent that one. Because the study's already been conducted for us, we've already, we've done all that, like, work, this is just giving you the option to use that study, you should, or put it, put it in the play this year, for you.
It can be done, uh.
It's been a while since I've been, uh, away all these, and start the process in November, to the advertising, and then in December, they got the resolution.
We.
And you know, you, um, have to notify the property praiser, the tax collector, and the property revenue.
And that's part of what we're.
So, they, yes, I believe it.
We filed an extension with the property praiser and tax collector, and they've both given us the waiver to.
What that property revenue is.
Uh, we don't have to have an extension from that, just from the property praiser's back, and we've, like, we've already got their.
See, in the future, at some time, every property owner will have to be advised, uh, for a form, if you're going to do that.
Yes, that, if we move forward, like, at, at this point, now, we're doing the, the four weeks of advertising for the public hearing, and if we move forward in, in the future, if we, if they, if the board does offer move, and, or, if our system, that's in the first class mail, not really, or the term notice would come in.
Dan, if I'm not mistaken, every year that you want to, um, consider this, we'll have to go through this process. to go through this process.
Oh, it's for one year.
For the, if you, if the board chooses not to move forward with it this year and you want the option next year to look at it again?
Yes.
Good. And we will start much earlier, still, we're not doing the last one initially before you won.
Okay. We have a draft resolution, so, Dan, will we do this by kind of longer?
Well, we're not, we're not, we're not moving... That resolution won't be needed until they, they're gonna be in the campaign. That's just, I believe, informational for you so you, you'll know what's, what's coming on that twenty eighth.
Okay. This is for the program of draft resolution under the head.
I'm moving through the draft resolution.
That, I'm sorry, I believe with, with the verbiage on that, it's probably she's did...
The advertisement, the advertisement was...
You're, you're proving that this is what, this is what we're trying to do, this is what we're putting up this call.
Okay.
Oh, we're doing it, huh?
Is there a second?
No, there is.
Okay. A motion, my commissioner pays, second my commissioner, any further discussions? If not, all the speakers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sound, motion carries. Thank you. I know the board, I've been told this before, that the here of the special assessment is to reduce the advantage for property owners. So, the expectation is that you're gonna generate a hundred fifty thousand dollars from the special assessment on fire that you would issue tax notice in the M F T refund out of that. Also, it's come as, it's familiar with it, is the exemption for people who can't pay if not in full custody. Like you, you did with the special assessment for your garbage. If you have a person that comes being auctioned in, that needs to call me down. So, Mark can grant that exemption, but you have to transfer money from your, with your account to cover that exemption, if you, if you keep in mind those two times, right?
Well, if you have to reduce your, your mileage and then if you have people that was all offered against, I mean, are you really gonna come out?
That's not, that's not a question to me, is...
I'm gonna come out here.
That would be, if it won't, when we move forward, you would have to set where you want that number, what, what that number's gonna be. And from my understanding, it doesn't have to be people, I mean, the thing is that if you remove, say, fire rescue from the M F T U, whatever used to be in that budget, you, you're gonna lower, you're gonna lower the M F T U.
But it's okay?
But it, but it doesn't have to be...
But...
Oh, how about that?
The problem is that you, you don't need that. And you're letting the M F T U, you're letting it have a little tax against residential and you also create a special assessment for that. Your double taxing, the two groups is what you...
But if you would remove, say, fire rescue out of the, if no funding for fire rescue comes from the M F T U, then it wouldn't be a double taxing because instead, the fire assessment is solely provided for and, and ensure publicated responsibility.
So, you're saying is if you want county five removed and M F T U and funded only with the...
That is, you know, or you could do it flip, and that's one of the things that the G S D has given us through the studies. And I'm just beginning off.
Yeah. And we're just, I know, we're just standing place.
Yeah, I, I would suggest...
If we decide to do this, then, then...
Which is a lot of hard work.
But, but if this comes up, then there'll be a lot of discussion and, um...
I would suggest this to be a workshop, I don't know, later date, that we can sit down and, or hold it for free. Yeah, I mean, like I said, I, I, anytime you want me here, I'm here for you, I'll answer every question, and you can call me, call me on my phone. But like I said, I, I think it's, you know, something that needs a longer time to discuss and you haven't already been thinking for it.
Part of the problem, but...
Between volunteer and day, it's possibly...
And that's all of the M F, M F T U, what's on today?
Which is largely incorporated up towards between eight, nine hundred thousand dollars for our personnel cost. So, but a little bit of that, what we use for opera.
Build a lot of fire out of that, I'm guessing.
And like I said, like, I've been here many times for, and we need, we need more staffing and, and they're just, they're no, there's no room left in, in the M F T U. And that's one of the things, if, if we move forward this, because it, it, it does lock us into, this assessment is what it is and we do know how it is, it's all waiting assessment. So, when you set this, I would ask that we consider where we, where we are, where we need to be and where our future's going. Because like the, if property values go up, it doesn't matter, we're, we're, you know, we're gonna keep the same amount of money in, in the fire service, in the fire service. Adversely, property values go down, we keep collecting the same amount of money there, so. But that's where I said, because it's so, I imply that knowing that we have deficits in the fire service, like that, if, if the board did you do this, I would ask that we, we're looking maybe to future and to try to make a little bit of change, you know, we need to.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, pleasure.
Jim Oliver, this is time fifteen, the board should discuss the possible artist starts in the spring season as it's been a bunch of different people. I've already, I don't know that, but I've already had calls and complaints about the mosquitoes already. Uh, hospital, rumor, recent, and all the things, maybe, if it, if it's already, we're gonna be getting bad there, maybe, and then we can, we can have their questions like that, I don't know. I can say that here. So, my recommendation is that we see if we can start spraying earlier because if we already have a problem, then it's too late. And with this covered, it's probably gonna be in the fall, we're gonna be in an impossible situation unless we try to eliminate some of these mosquitoes. So, when I started the department head about what we, what we typically do and if this was something that was possible, I was advised that the temperature needs to be at least sixteen degrees at night to spray, which I would not think would be too far away. I'm not upset, can you run?
Right, well, although it's a work.
I don't think that, um, it's a work. Um, we have, we started advertising, a little bit advertising this week for drivers, that's a seasonal position. We have two on staff who we think will return, but we've already started the advertising process. As far as the funding for the chemicals, we have two of what they call codes in house that we, we've already purchased. With the annual budget for this at ten thousand dollars plus an additional ten thousand dollars grant that we are pursuing, we should have enough to purchase four more, which would give us a total of six. And I don't think historically we've ever used more than four for normal use. So, I think that with the purchase of the additional chemical, we could spray more and if the temperatures are stable over sixteen, then we can start spraying as early as we can.
Well, if the temperatures used for it before, then if we start early, it's true, I mean, usually, oh, we would have, um, you know, I mean, I'd like to hear from the board.
I think, hey, I think the next vital step, just get on and we know what we have to do. I think if it warms up, folks are gonna be calling and shooting the truck. Now, they go out and they set the heat count, so they have some data before they're gonna spread it through.
I think the state does that for us, definitely.
But I'm all in agreement that I anticipate, uh, getting the speed a little bit, based on my observations over my lifetime.
Sure, and we have, we have looked at your frank effort already because I think we all have the same concerns when we see all of the water around us, that it's going to be a bad year for the state if we try to work it sooner to see if there was a way we could have areas spraying. I don't think that's going to happen, but we have, we have at least asked that question. But we do think that we have, we will have the funding to accomplish. Starting spraying earlier, we'll have to, you know, bring staff on board, but we are working on that now.
Okay. So, do we need to have a motion or just...
Well, we have the funding. I would say if, if it's okay, that we'll see what we can get in the motion. Are not able to obtain the additional funding, I would say we probably need to come back to the board and ask for additional funding at some point.
The spirits that we've taken to breathe at night, it can be a...
Like the like then, that won't be long. I think, right, County Attorney Island Number Sixteen, the county attorney to discuss airport property deed by P C B A to Taylor County. I'm not there.
Yes, yes. I was sitting in my office, not in my own business, might get his emails and, um, I'm gonna be ready for it, it's not me here now.
Right.
Um, property ariser office, this is the legal description of our last one, seventy three feet, on through the cemetery. Um, and then he asked, the P C B A doesn't have the funds to abstract it or re-survey so as to generate a new legal description that could be, you know, corrected warrant to be. Then he asked him to county, do something about it. I sent him a letter, it's, it's right here in your thing, that's just, well, number one, it's the first time I've heard about this. And then, where is the description, excuse me, the D come from? You know, I mean, who prepared it? Uh, that's what it does say. And of course, the D, uh, he put a disclaimer on the D, uh, we don't do title work on it, you, you don't guarantee the description or the title, who are you, the attorney? I developed that a long time ago, put on D. So, but, the P C A, they gave a general warranty, they warranted the title to it. So, the question is, I would think, the first thing that I would do would be to ask the top, you know, the, um, the property ariser, I can't get it out of my mouth, generally can do some descriptions, you know, every once in a while, you see them doing, I mean, you had one, did you, um, that saved you a pot of cash, right?
Yeah, fifty eight hundred.
That's more than a pot.
A pot.
Yeah. So, if y'all want me to do, I'll call, um, Bruce and say, you know, where is this and what can y'all do to help us instead of us having to get, uh, a surveyor to go out there and survey and, and find where the, what you're getting the teller with a hundred seventy eight, seventy three feet was, except on the cemetery, but pretty good, right?
With all that little interior, that's, that's...
Yeah. So, let me see what, what, what can be done on that specific, and maybe they can read, read, um, give us another description without having to get a surveyor out there to do that.
Right there.
Conrad, you can let, if you'll afford that to me, if it's, if you have an overlap to the west where I think the, the, um, cemetery is, and if it's a set overlap, we can slide that, I can slide that bearing back, adjust your north, south boundaries, and give you an unneaten boundary description.
Okay.
If, if it's as simplistic as what I heard you describe. Or at least let me look at it and I can tell you if it's an easy thing.
So, all I need to do is give you the, uh, the date of the description.
You'll give me the legal, legal description, I'll plot it, and if they disclose in there how much it extends over into the cemetery, then we can grab that bearing and slide it back and then just re-describe the unneaten bounds.
Thank you, Kenneth.
That's right, Kenneth. Um, but if that doesn't work, you know, let me know, we'll go, we'll do something else. I'm just gonna give who wanted the D.
Yes, sir.
And you want to probably do our letters back and forth, or just the D?
That's fine.
The D, fine?
No, the letters, letters would be helpful to understand the circumstances.
Now, you slide back one hundred and fifty, you say you still have airport property route. You didn't arrive, like...
Just from what I heard, that's the, extend of the encroachment, so what I would suggest is move it beyond that encroachment, maybe if it's one seventy three, move it one seventy five. That way, you're certain of the, you're outside of the encroachment. So, basically, if the top line says run five hundred feet, this bearing and distance, then we're gonna just, we're gonna shorten that distance and let's stop short of the cemetery and then turn and go the same bearing to do south. That's how I envision it.
Moving forward, County Administrator Island Number Seventeen, the board should consider approval of a revised bully calendar for physical year eighteen and nineteen, as presented by the County Administrator. And you may recall, there was some discussion, um, maybe at our last workshop, that perhaps you should change the proposed board workshop, or the scheduled board workshop dates, from the second Thursday to the fourth Tuesday to March. So, we have given you a draft calendar, um, with those dates. I think, um, if these dates work, um, for the board, the biggest question would be, do you want to have a workshop at the end of February since we're having a strategic planning session on the seventh? Do you have any items that need, have to be discussed that we'll put this on Thursday if we have time? Well, if we have time. I, I, I don't know that we'll complete all the items on the seventh, but, um...
Will you have other things that we need to discuss this month?
Okay, then, I would say that when I have a normal shot this month.
Okay. So, you think so?
Okay. Eighteen, the board should consider approval of the revised perfecting level of approval policy as presented by the County Administrator. Do you need to approve the balance, how, the reminder? Do you need to approve the reminder, Helen?
Uh, we can't. I'm moving approval of the revised conference, that's what we, we said.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all the speakers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sound, motion carries. Melody goes to eighteen, the board should consider approval of the revised perfecting level of approval policy.
I know. I'll let Warren talk her, and then I'll ask she comment on that.
As we discussed before, um, really the purpose of this is just to codify the actions that the board took in two thousand and fourteen, um, to change the level of authority for purchasing. I had a draft in your packet and we realized today that we need to change one sentence to clarify the policy that for purchases of single items less than twenty five hundred dollars, that purchasing practices to be used with purchase orders authorized by the department head. Purchase orders for the current unit cost of twenty five hundred to thirty five thousand dollars will be authorized by the department head and the county administrator. Um, written quotes are required if available, and we also added that all requests for quotations do contain a written specification.
Okay. I'm going. And then, I will move the testing of the policies into a personal level of...
Okay. A motion, there is a second.
Okay.
Okay. Motion, my commissioner pays, second my commissioner, looking any further discussions? If not, all the speakers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sound, motion carries.
Now, it'll make things be a lot easier on staff.
Yeah. Well, that's very, and it gives, um, I believe, our local divisions an opportunity to be more competitive because that way they can give us written quotes instead of having...
It's not at all good, sir. I think it's great to look.
Yes, thank you. Remember, not taking the county administrator to discuss national honor? Last week, Melody and myself, we did attend a restore act meeting in Tallahassee. Um, the information given to us was mainly regarding grant submission process. It looks like we may be able to submit grant applications for feasibility studies by the end of March if we don't need an amendment to the S T P. I will say that without a doubt, the grant requirements are extremely detailed, um, and there are strict auditing. I, I think we all realized that after the meeting last week. So, we were hoping to bring back more guidance to the board about the feasibility studies and the number of properties on the list. What I can say is that within our budget, we have enough funding to, it looks like it, um, have twelve feasibility studies. We have more properties than that in our list. And we could not find a published date, um, that gave a deadline for property submissions. So, I think... So, I think that brings us back to how the board wants to, how the board wants to handle the number of properties we have on our list, if you want to have a ranking system. If you want to submit grant applications for twelve feasibility studies, you can do that, it's within the budget, but just understand that twelve separate grant applications from what we can tell. Um, there aren't a lot of counties before us who are submitting these grant applications, so we, we are trying to compare notes with other counties. Um, we don't have a lot of information to go by, and unfortunately, when we reach out for guidance, it's not always consistent. So, um, and we do have milestones, um, and you're, one of the milestones is feasibility studies. And then, within that same year, we can, um, have property approvals, and then, the next year, it looks like there's a property acquisition, and there's several years with no accident at all. And I believe it's twelve years after we purchase the property that we are, we have a milestone of construction. So, it may be helpful, um, to discuss this some more. Thursday, okay.
Thursday for sure, there are a lot to talk about. Boy, we may have to blow the whole trail, if you don't have a lot of other, um, people that have done things. But, yeah, I think Thursday should be one of the first things that we talk about, since we think we've run out of time. We've run out of time, but we can do it another day too, I mean, you know, we're here for it.
We're full now?
Whatever. Now, my.
Oh, you said twelve, I was, two grand proposal, twelve.
That's our understanding, hours point ago.
A lot, please.
Was that, you're not according to what we told, and not according to what some other counties did, individual properties, um, and there's a lot of.
And what do you do, two feasibility studies or twelve? Does that cost three hundred dollars?
No, no, I believe it, we think it's around twenty five thousand dollars per study, per study.
Per study.
But you are basing it for three hundred thousand dollars.
But I think that it comes down to the total, of the property list.
Yeah.
So, if you spend all, all fees, you don't have much property to do the roots.
It's twenty five dollars, one of the counties were working, I think, for color, and it's twenty five thousand dollars for a feasibility study here, so it'd be about ten years.
I was trying to make quick money.
Well, it's about eleven million dollars, but it's very, for property acquisitions. So, but still, I mean, correct, I, I don't think why we would wanna, did, that mean, that was on a lot.
Not one thing, I mean, you might wanna do six, and then you don't get any takers, you write off sale, and you do, you can add feasibility studies on that five year sell out, and six more. So, it doesn't work that way.
I think it's, the, the milestone for the year line is feasibility studies and property approvals. So, I would say, if you do three feasibility studies, and, you know, one and a, out of those three, hands out, then you can move forward, or two, they need to move forward with property approvals. On those specific properties. Now, we did, um, take some time to look at what some other counties were doing, and there are counties who have multiple sites for consideration. But I think the, the other, one of the counties we looked at, it was five sites, one county was three sites. Um, I, I did not see another county that has as many sites for consideration as we do, but then, we also have much more to come than other counties do. So, I don't want to, you know, I want to compare apples to apples, it's a difficult situation, because several counties.
Yeah, well, these other counties that have five, are, are they getting more than, uh, uh, four miles than we are in the state of town?
Yeah, yeah, they, and then we are, we are consistently followed by everyone, from like the salt and fort ends, who report people who are working with us. We do not have somebody across, you know, across the board, they can spend years, they really cut back on. But, but that's not a rule, that's a management issue. Right, it's a man, it's a management issue, and, um, and, and it varies so much by county. There are some counties that have full-time people that work on nothing but the draft, um, grant, and, and honestly, we're not in that situation.
Right, and, and I, you know, our, our, our engineer has already given us some opinions, so, uh, he's a, a, a good engineer, and I think that we should pay attention to what's in training. Um, but I would encourage you to consider a firm cutoff date, if that's what you agree to do.
Yes, I think.
I have one of the first ones, we need to have a firm cutoff date. Anything else that you say, if you do, we're not taking any more.
Now, you said twelve years before you start construction, start construction practice, well, that's the way the milestones are laid out, my, that's about right, isn't it?
And that's what their money, in the meantime, they acquire a property, you can still want to develop it with grant money we can obtain, and I told the lawn to let y'all know that you might wanna look at properties that way, since we wait twelve years to get their money to develop, so, or still money. Look at properties where we feel comfortable, but we know we can get S E P money, or retard, or land and water homes, that you might be going, and then develop. Because that's one of the clauses too, is you can't just let the property sit, you have to still be moving forward, and you still have reporting, so, we'll be monitoring, and they'll be monitoring.
Yeah, and, you know, thinking about all the permitting that you have to get, and, and how long, that's possibly could make, maybe not even be able to get it. Uh, but anyway, we can discuss this on Thursday, and more detail on this, some guidelines on Thursday.
Now, the good news is that perfectly, uh, secretary did approve, um, the draft statement qualification language for top line dredging, engineering, and design purposes. So, now, that's top line money, so we will be, well, Kenneth, mainly, we'll be talking about, Kenneth, we'll be bringing that back to the board for approval, for the draft, um, statement of qualifications. So, we can start advertising that and move forward on the dredging project.
The other part is, the money, the top three money, when they were talking, it looked like the deed is, you were selling all your money on a piece of property, and you still don't have what you need. Now, the, the pieces of property that we got, that we going, that's to, if you presented it up, are all those people willing to sell?
I don't know at this time, um, they may.
Well, I think, how did they get on the list? If, if they didn't, uh, show a willing sell, and propose, if it's, if it's proposed like that, not a, not a, not a. Well, I know it's not that song, but somebody has to draft the name, yeah, and put the twelve name, why can't you provide it, twelve fifteen, fifteen?
Fifteen, I mean, the committee has meetings, and they did, uh, some, I know it's two of them.
Yeah, okay.
There was a committee. But it was only of the chance that they were willing to sell, but if you have the prices that comes anyway, that's what they want for.
They go up.
Exactly, I'm saying, you know, that's.
Yeah, we, we could be testing, uh, what property, that, 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 well, or whether to sell or the price you pay. Okay, the feasibility study, now, when will that come? After we select the property?
I, I didn't.
The feasibility study, from my, that twenty five thousand dollars.
Right, so.
We don't wanna go do that on a piece of property we can't afford.
Correct, I would think so, so I would think that if you go through some type of ranking, I hate to use that word, but some type of process that would, that would demonstrate, okay, we want to do these three first, and then these three next, and, you know, demonstrate some type of progression of how you want to perform the feasibility studies, that, that might, you might want to consider that. And, and I will tell you that there is a willing seller, um, who would like to approach the board, and ask for consideration of, of purchasing, um, their particular property, and then ask the board to obtain, try to obtain reimbursed, reimbursement at a later time, which is an option as well, but a board decision.
We'll discuss that on, on Thursday, um, but, you know, if, I mean, if you're, say you're selling a piece of property, is the seller the one that's obligated to take the appraisal?
Well, we have that in the, we have funding for that, we know the draft one, so that's part of our milestone, is the appraisal process.
I think we got a double process here, or I think we have, or the Starland folks that brought that back, they should take the property, I'm afraid, and go to the property owner and say, this is what we can take. And then we, they let them all drop out, no more taking, and then do the feasibility study all the time.
And I think that feasibility studies, one of the purposes of the feasibility study is to, is to, um, meet the qualifications that we laid out in our S E P. As far as what we're looking for in a piece of property, so, if you recall us in the S E P, there are certain, um, items mentioned, like adequate parking, um, you know, the, the depth of the water. Um, there are certain things, criteria that we decided we wanted to be in that in our S E P, and that's the purpose of the feasibility study. I don't disagree with, with what you're saying, but the approach that we decided upon was to meet the conditions of the S E P, or the intent of the S E P. Have a feasibility study followed by the property appr, approvals.
Okay. Can you give us a briefest idea, if it kind of meets the, what we're expecting before we go and do the feasibility?
Yeah, yeah, I hear. If we go and buy more pieces of property, tell somebody, want to sell a piece of property, and then make it go more than dead. That's one of the criteria, that's, that's, if, if we take that into account, that would, that, that, that's one of the, you know, the two criterias that, that's presented us in the workshop.
But do very closely remember what was laid out in our.
It is there, what they did.
We've already got this one, and we're not good.
All right, you're getting my bad time, that's it.
Okay, okay, just one other real quick update, um, we did have a conference call, um, with the rail folks last week as well.
With rail?
Rail.
Okay.
Um, and if you'll, if you'll consider, when the government, when, when there was a government shutdown, the rail folks did not work either, they were on boardroom. So, we did have a conference call to try to get everyone on the same page again, we are expecting, uh, a grant agreement soon for the board review, and we have invited the rail folks to come and give another workshop, because it has been such a long period of time. Um, to bring everybody back up to speed, um, we need to speak about the rail project and, and the grant agreement, and then there will be a separate timing agreement, um, that needs to be considered. And that is another bonus project, um, that we are still working.
That one got presented in the gym? Okay, they made notes, quickly, okay.
Now, once we've received the grant agreement and the statement of words, we expect things to finally start moving very quickly, but, um, we do want an update to the board before we, we start bringing grant agreements and R F, R S P documents for C B I, including a grant administration, and there, there are a lot of new changes with this grant as well. We do want you to be updated on that.
When you find her sitting so dead, Tom, doesn't her care? Okay, number twenty, comments and concerns from the public from not a minute now, if you're here, you wanna speak, you just place your name and address, and stick through here. Sure?
Sure, please.
Um, well, you're very good screen, um, I have your name and address. Do I want to hear it? I guess it's gate three, obviously like that. Um, I passed you on the page I, but, um, I need screen, pass the bridge, you're locked out, and then you just put up phones, but it's becoming a concern. I've had several complaints, um, there's people that go down there to golf, or those, you know, go out with the kids, it, it's, you know, so I don't know, is the county still leasing the property, and we can bring out some nerve?
Where, where is it from?
In Greenbridge.
At Gate Street, at Gate Street Road, pass the bridge.
Pass the bridge.
It's on the.
Now, the problem that is, the county people, probably, the county buildings, that thing, it's always a danger to you, and, and there's some old lifts to bring. But I don't know, if I don't have balance, can we search and tell, and put all the other barriers around it there? Yeah, sure, really. These talks can give you all the hits you have.
Yeah.
Sure can, I, sure can. Now, there's an ashore, y'all, y'all riding over here.
Going down to the landing to go check your boat. You need to go out on the delts, or.
Pass, pass the bridge.
Pass the bridge.
Once you get past the bridge, how hard?
Uh, it's, it's immediately after, it's where the homeworks are, and you can tell we're locked out, well, it's dangerous, I mean, it's, it's, um, the road's like this, now it's.
I have a problem in us, we can rub legal question, but let's give, give a chance to that condition, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hey, guys, uh, J K Davis, three, 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 four, so, um, real quick, uh, the historical society is, uh, I talked to lady before, before you left, a while back, and we were talking about, um, applying for grants for the historical society, and it took a long process to get, uh, gather up everything we needed, but we have everything we need now. Um, we are, uh, looking to do a grant under fifty thousand dollars, so there's no requirement for a match for the county. Uh, and the building itself, uh, houses all the resources, you know, a lot of your brands, y'all being applied for, y'all get a lot of the resources from the historical society, about the software, all the history. We are basically an annex of history for the county, because we have everybody's history countywide. Um, we have the, um, five block mural, we have the oldest Mason apron in the state of Florida, we have our veterans' uniform, uh, we have photographs throughout the county, everything you can think of, real quick. Um, visitors, we have gaining visitors, uh, since we've been active in the community, we have people coming in from Germany to cool in, who are just meant to come to the county, that went to Germany. Uh, I think they're in the war, I think they just stick to come home, after they married, um, we have people from England, who came and stayed a week and did the research. We did special events for them kind of people and all that, when they come from out of town. We have people from Idaho, Michigan, New York, Washington State, all come down and stay in hotels, and come eat in our restaurants, to, uh, to come visit the historical site, do research. And now we have genealogy, uh, two states, where people can come in and do genealogy with professional research people that are volunteering from the church, and do calculator and paint. Um, we are having issues with the building, like I said, we, we just kinda like started getting a leak, and it's gotten worse and worse, and we have the root problem, we have floor problems on the second floor where termite damage is, and we have no air conditioner upstairs, and we have, you know, governor's desk, original, uh, voting records from the court, uh, from the election office, from the eighteen hundreds in there. Uh, we have piles of stuff that can't be replaced, and it can never get quarter damaged, we have leaky tunnels, stairwells up to the second story. Um, we have, um, the column problem, and it's only five thousand dollars to fix that, nobody will stable it, and won't let it sink no more, and doing more damage into the building. We have historians, uh, historical restoration people come in, they volunteer to look at the building, and some other, Mr. Wilster's daughter, Dr. Parkford's granddaughter, and his daughter, and the Wilsters are involved. Uh, getting all that reason, they did a lot, uh, got volunteers to do that kind of stuff, um, we have, um, oh, and, um, Melanie has fallen in love with us so much that she said she would volunteer and help us with the grant running on her own time, uh, or to help us on the historical building, and they, other people are gonna be involved with the grant stuff. We have the, um, memorization now to be officially a historical district, or whatever building, we're telling you, we have to have, we're nonprofit now, and we're actually gonna touch all the track tech this month. Terry, and brush y'all, uh, fifty percent, I believe it is, uh, to the army project, to the courthouse, uh, so we've been really more involved in the community, we're saving our history, we're getting our bills, and we're enjoying school tours and everything else, and, um, I guess we're kinda getting.
We're gonna have to.
Yeah. Sorry, I tried to quit. So, um, I guess, uh, I, there's a consideration of the, the, um, consider, uh. So, um, I guess, uh, I guess the consideration of the, um, consider, uh, the decision of the county office so that we can get that part of, being a part of the, so we can get the grant, and we were thinking, and it helps us get the grant easier.
I have a phone with us.
So, we'll, 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 we'll.
Melvin's phone, he needs it.
And, uh, we are putting more on the free stuff, and, um, to do a half price meeting, calling up like you said, I'm going to get my.
Thank you. I'm sending y'all on a speed.
Well, that's my request. And so, we, we have a board here for Mr. Miles, but could I ask you, let me go first, so we can.
Okay.
Uh, let's, let's go to the dinner.
Okay, any, anybody else from the public who wishes to speak? Okay, if not, we're going to go on to twenty one, more information, I don't, commit your pace.
All right, thank you, and I'm going to bring Jakey, and Jim, and bring Jakey.
Sorry, I'm waiting.
You, you go first, and then I'm going to tell you what my concerns are.
Okay.
All right, no, you go ahead, can I have your turn? Well, I've been trying to stop that bad word for plenty. I've had citizens, briefly, this Saturday, who spoke to me and talked my system and doing something with conditions of, and, and historical related needs, and evidence broken in fights, very expensive, going, going to the game.
Okay.
And this particular gentleman who was doing talking, I think maybe his wife was the driver of the vehicle, broke down. And I think we may also be affiliated with the evidence, which I think has. He said, most of your evidence would have over two hundred and some thousand miles. And I said, well, I remember now that the hospital had received a grant, I don't think it got funded, did you?
No, we didn't get funded, yeah.
And you, and you guys a little bit on one of the data for evidence, I remember you talking about.
You might, yeah, when we came up for the audit, I mentioned that.
You mentioned that, yeah.
Um, I don't have the exact miles, but there are two, three of them are two thousand and twelve. They have over two hundred thousand miles, somewhere between two ten and two forty five. Now, one of those three, we did go back and through, um, the Bay Foundation, and maybe through the hospital foundation. We rebuilt the engine, we rebuilt the transmission, the drive train, and all that one. Uh, but nobody wrote down what the miles on that one was, so, uh, but I would say that with that, it's probably about twenty five, thirty thousand miles. So, two are definitely, two of those three are definitely over two hundred thousand miles. And they're constantly having small breakdowns, generous, alternator goes bad, those kinds of things. The other ambulance, which is the one that was, got, was purchased in two thousand and sixteen, has about a hundred and twenty five thousand miles, that was a grand, and it's the bariatric ambulance. That's the one with the larger back end and the ability to, to use on bariatric patients. And we did a lot of trans purchasing that.
All right, well, then he cuts the case. Are you going to pop a grant again for another evidence issue?
We will, we will attempt to do that.
And sooner or later, we're not going to get any grants. So, it's all like this, by that, like, like we do, which could be you all, we don't understand, we don't have money. Just still got that three hundred thousand, uh, sales tax, etc., in the, are due.
There's three hundred and thirty, thirty, thirty eight.
Three hundred and twenty eight now.
Really, really.
They're on a, some less than twenty.
But I mean, I'm not spending, I'm not spending that money, but I wanted to know that, that, that there is a focus concern about conditions of the evidence, and Lord knows that we had the money. Uh, we've taken our contingent to buy two, anyway, we just don't have one, by that. And that's like a, that's your way.
We, we monitor, we do the oil.
Have you got a maintenance program on them?
Yeah, we, we have it for oil changes and tires and that.
Uh, tire, I'm glad you mentioned tires, because that's my next topic, so, yeah. Now, I was having a tire mounted on, on, on the trailer, and I'll go ahead and name the man name, J B's tires, he does road service. He's been told by your folks at the hospital that you're not calling him to buy your tires, that you only buy good year tires, but keep them, because you buy tires on the state contract, and you buy them from another person. Yet, he called Mr. J B, when you have a flat out of parking lot out there at the hospital, or when you got a road service call, because he's the only person that does them. And he's gone out a couple times, against instructions that he's gotten from a lady at your facility, saying, we don't want you to do any more business in this hospital, you know, I, I, sorry, I.
Okay, uh, what, what we did, uh, there was so much controversy about tires, with the budget, when I got here. We actually went out and did a process to do, to, on it. We did these studies for a while, there were, there were, there were internal issues. So, we went back out again, and we, 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 we don't really do a good, we get a quote for the lowest, lowest tire on the contract, and so we used them, we, we used them, same with oil change and things like that. So, I don't know the situation that, the current situation about C B, but I'll look back into it. But what we were trying to do was get, get somebody that we consistently went to and could provide the best parts on, on, on the state contract.
Well, I can't understand why in the community you only got one local bidder that comes out and does road service on tires and that kind of stuff, that you, that you won't call him. But yet you call him, and he does it out of business heart, and does it out of everything, and it doesn't work.
And I'm speaking with our, so I'll go back and find out about that.
I think J B, I'll have a way of discussing that, I promise you, at the board meeting. And it's administrative, so I'll check into this, and see what we can do. Now, I don't let J B get bad at anybody, if you use him for the road service work, I mean, that's.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, we could, we could just make a agreement.
Well, our tires, you ever call him, come do our road service business, that's not a problem.
Right, and again, I don't, I don't know the circumstances, you know, I've been anticipating that part of it, but I'll check that out.
All right, we're talking about this credit, and the lady brought that to you. We're talking about evidence, we're talking about tires, um, historical site, roof, then he talked about that. After the historical site building, I got some hundred, some parking lot, those parking come in and see, by a very nice name, said, have you seen that building over here? Uh, that white building, it doesn't, it's long as the county, does that? Well, the roof is leaking. I said, I'll talk about it tonight, so I've, I've done it. Now, we don't see the list, the artifacts over there, getting ruined. Don't know what's wrong with the roof, the one that you ever didn't ask to go there and pack it.
I thought that the repairs that we had done were complete, but I was certainly at that.
Well, they have to have a five gallon bucket, you know, they can't sign the lease, it's hot. But, yes, I'm told that they have to put a five gallon bucket on the stairwell to catch the water. And the five gallon buckets and all this rain gets full of water, so they're in the leak. So, uh.
I'm watching.
Uh, pretty careful.
I, I just, just, um, so you have information. The hospital did go on diversion, it's all one of those, it's twenty four hours. A little explanation, the main water line into the hospital had a, we had a leak, and it's all copper, six inch copper, started to have a small leak. It progressed to where it was seeping out. We were working on, uh, preparing to get it fixed. Uh, we had to order the part, the part that was not available, wasn't available in town, housey. We attempted to do that and take the hospital down Thursday. I kind of got Thursday through Sunday, we're all mixed, but Thursday evening at six thirty, we took it down. We got ready to do, pump all the water out, got ready to do it, and we continued to have some water running through the building, even though the water was shut off. Um, so it went off and on all night, all night, and into the next day. Couldn't get, worked at the city, the city, I'm at a couple times, tried to shut the water off, um, did cranking down. And eventually, we did get the water completely shut off, because of copper and soldering. We got, we attempted earlier in the day to do a, the second solderer, because there was water lagging in the leak. We made the determination based on the state statute to knock that, that we were twenty four hours, we called them, and said we were going on diversion, which meant we had to close the E B R, we had to pretty much discharge all of the patients. And then, within twenty four hours, we were back up and had it, had it resolved. Um, a number of issues related to that, and we might be talking to you in the city about that.
Yeah, well, I, I can't believe there's not just one cutoff valve.
There's, they, they, they're, they're, they're not even, the only valve was the major valve.
Made valve.
The city made valve.
You gotta turn off the water in the hospital, that means the hose.
Right, and then there's kind of a funky deal with, that, that, you know, we had to put in the, the fifty five thousand gallons tank for fire suppression. Uh, but nowhere in the building are there, are there shut off valves so that we could section off and at least have water there, or drain through the section, because any, any, any of you with any part of the copper pipe requires that we bring, probably from around three thousand gallons of water out of the building to, to.
Drain the pipe.
Drain all the pipe.
You know, the building changes, uh, you're going to have more and more of these problems, leak. I, I don't know, in the hospital, you have to be careful about walls if you take out, things you do. We may have to consider adding some cutoff valve.
We, we, Norman and I already talked about that. We thought the, 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 the cutting to and fix would be fine, we didn't anticipate having any running water. It was about like somebody had a hose, a stairway turned on, and it kept running through the pipe, which was the problem. But we are going to go back, walk, look at, look at the building, and try to figure out where we could put cutoff valves in. And we also want to put a couple of places that we can drain in between those cutoffs, but again, we, we have some flexibility. Uh, but unfortunately, the water kept running, and we attempted to do it, couldn't do it until we actually got all the water out of the drive, which took about twenty four hours.
Yeah, when you transferred the patient, you had a house, how many patients?
We actually only transferred one patient, yes, four other patients, they were all at the point of being discharged, so, um, you know.
But then discharged.
They were discharged anyway. Um, and then, um, I haven't had time to go back and look at what to transfer, well, I think we did somewhere between, um, we did about twenty five to thirty runs during that period of time.
Yeah, a few were chosen, yeah.
Just people we, we did runs on, and how, how many of those resulted in transfers, I don't have that number.
The ambulance, well, that's running, but rather I go to fifty of it, just divert it.
We diverted wherever, wherever it was. And, um, you know, um, I was pretty much there the whole time, and so, um, I think the world was out, and we did have a few people come up at the door, but most of those would walk out, that weren't, weren't, weren't.
But that really was.
And.
Well, just glad, glad that, um.
So, um, on Friday, Thursday, you had a census of five?
We had five that day, that's all the census we had, and came along.
And this is the season?
Yeah, well, while we'd been running, uh, average of nine patients, so we were, we'd be a six or seven, and a thirteen or four, you know, thirteen back down, which is high on that. So, uh, I obviously were census today, um, because I left about ten in three, because, uh, honestly, um, was at the, the third, and then I was one, because we visited one patient shortly after we came back on. We had two days, basically two days, and no patients, but they could look at it.
Let me just, to try to, to try to trace if we need to be, I'm, I'm Ken Aron, on board, I'm in. The, the, the census was low, because the work was anticipated. And we, we, and we, we set everything up to do this in about a six hour time span, which is about what it should have been. But to not being able to clear the lines, turned it into, into a, a much bigger problem than it really should have been. It was resolved, and we got, we got the borderline fixed, and we brought everything back up again. Reasonably quickly, I, I was not, I, I wasn't real happy about that, I'm sure Tom wasn't either. But it was a problem, and, and we found a solution, and we got it fixed. And touched the well, huh? Oh, I'm sure the well was old, I don't think he thinks about that at all.
If, 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 if thirty minutes were recent, then it wasn't a big deal.
My concern is, and I spoke to it the other day when the audit gave us the, the actual thing, annual report. If, if the building is aged, and there are systems in buildings that are going to water, where they're immense as time goes on, and we're running issues like, like this, where there's no valves in, in the, in the, in the primary, uh, messy water system, I don't know why. But what I would suggest is that we all get together, or at least please let us get a chance to get together and, and go over ad build plans, ad build plans, see what we can find, and compare them to the approved plans in the state, see what other issues might be there that we're unaware of, and meet with you guys and talk about it, and lay out, lay out how we're going to address these problems in the future in a clear and concise way, that, that maybe it's round the problem. We can do that, but we, we're going to have to give us a plan.
Yeah, I was going to call you, we, we do not have ad build for the building, we have other plans, we don't have ad build, but we're going, we're going to come back, and we'll all field check and see.
Uh, uh, we're checking.
We're checking, and we're all in the city. Right after I got here, the state came in to do inspection, and, um, all of a sudden, the state inspector found that there, the building was losing time, smoke, um, um.
About sharp.
So, that that had not been put in, that were on, on, on the plan. So, we had to go back and have the building manufactured, go back and, and do that.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not in the posture of finger pointing, laying decisions, so I'm in, I'm in the, in the mode of, let's find out what's wrong, and develop solutions for it.
And we, we have a really, like, a super competent guy, that's the, the plant operations guy now, and he's spent a lot of time working on bringing the systems back up, cleaning the systems up, and doing that. And we're, you know, and trying to get good maintenance programs on all of it. And so, um, I think we're, we're in pretty good shape, just those things that nobody knew were there in the background, and it's kind of jumped on, checking it.
As we, as we come across this, that we'll keep you guys to know it, if you're building, and you, you need to know it. Yes, with your information, I don't think, I was on the hospital ward when construction was going along. And it always bothered me, him a little bit, as the chairman of the hospital ward, was the first husband of the architect on the wing. I've been involved in construction twenty years, a whole lot in hospitals, but I had to help with some of it. And it doesn't, it doesn't do any except, like, hard to connect it down.
Hard, hard, it's, it's.
But, but we don't need to be in that posture, where we.
Well, you did that, people.
Well, let's see what we got, and what we can do to fix whatever problem.
A lot of people thought usually we made creative advances in that, that's just like the, the boiler, um, there was the maintenance issues, problems that it contributes to, but it still looks, has to run life, there, that life, and by the way, um, they are, they were supposed to start today, but they're starting tomorrow, to come in and start pulling the other out. We'll run it for about thirty days, and then we'll be out there, we'll figure out what's up.
So, we're doing great, I appreciate you all. I would appreciate it, I apologize for that. They kind of always do it in just for.
See, I probably got these specs, and they were even still.
We, we really desperately need ad build, we really do.
Let's see, what happens is you got the original specs, and then you, a free change order is along.
And that's what we need to have, it should be on the app.
Yeah, that's what we're going for.
They're, they're probably the last one that we have for you.
Okay.
Well, I'll come, this is, what are you going to?
I'll give them one.
Okay. If you will, I'll keep her. I, I have on, very, very hands off. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Anyone else? Which way? All right, then we will, um, we're not, we're done with the, uh, we're done with that one, I'm sorry, we're on the, uh.
I, I'm pretty, I'm pretty good. I had all the.
You have nothing to do with it.
Well, you know, any equipment dead horse. I, I thought, when I heard hospitals down there, it was my mind. I never heard it was going down before, so I, I was concerned. But if I got out there and I saw people working, and I didn't get in the way of this, only the, I was impressed. You should have been back to what you had to do. Yeah, the other thing that happened Saturday morning, I did get a call that, uh, hospital had a little dip in down there, not too far from where, was that Morgan Manning, Morgan, Freddie Morgan Brothers?
He's a doctor.
He's a doctor, doctor, yeah, that's not hospital, he's a doctor. And, uh, talked to this woman, she got somebody down there. And, uh, talking to the woman, she got promoted down there, and it was, uh, over that, went down there, my four or five feet. You sure that's stable down there, to hold it back up, and, and, thank you, Mr. One.
Well, thank your public work department, they're, they're a great job.
You know, I, I went down there, and I did tell them I appreciate it. There's a plane going, going, and it's going up there, and...
That's, I, that's what I think, you know, I meant, that's what I think, like...
Eh?
What about, what?
There's about two hundred yards this side of, uh, San Boys?
We know this, the house, that's right next to the close bar, that has multiple issues, the sinker.
Oh, yeah?
It's going in, there are holes in concrete, the wall, it's not concrete, and it's...
Okay, I'm not going to, yeah, we got to tell them, and, 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 yeah. Uh, the other thing I'm going to mention, I did go up there with the hill, do a show action, all that kind of stuff. Oh, so... I'm going to probably get a little fist coming up there, too, it was about three hundred million dollars, and, and piled up there. And the man that was, I think, one of the beginners in trying to get that thing started. When he got it started, they called him, they said, you know, that he can't, because he have, would have run bad then. Or he told, he'd be all right about that. But I'm going back on March twenty eighth, when they had a loan. I'm about to, yeah, you need to know, I'm like, oh, George, well, if you need to know, just, you know, if you gave them money or something, you can need it, you know?
That's right.
Okay. You're going to do it, you're going to make it.
I would have it to say, you, you can be all, if you're emotional, you're all... All the time, you're all?
Uh-huh.
Good night.